Good morning and welcome to the August 10th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're pleased to have you here as we conduct the business of the people of this community. And we're going to begin our meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that's by invoking God's presence on these proceedings. We were going to have an opportunity to introduce you to the new rabbi at Temple Israel of Columbus, but he has had a family illness that is nothing serious, but that has kept him from being here this morning. So I'm going to ask our mayor pro tem, Gary Allen, if you wouldn't mind praying for us.
Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, first God, we want to thank you for the many blessings. And Father, we thank you today for our mayor, our city manager, city council, and for various levels of city employees who show up every day and do the work of the city and make us look good. We thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the citizens, help us to act with character and conviction, and listen with understanding. And God, help us to speak with clarity, restraint. God, give us a spirit of service, and we ask you to continue to bless us as we go through this meeting. We know you're able to do exceedingly and abundantly above all things. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. If you would, please rise and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, councilors, you have received the minutes from the July 27th council meeting. If there's a motion approved from the mayor pro tem, is there a second? Second, I'm sorry, councillor House. Any edits, discussions, questions about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. You know, it's been our practice during our twice-a-month council meetings to give you an update on COVID, and it was blissfully boring to do so for a while there. But as has been well documented throughout national news and around the state and certainly right here in Columbus, we have seen the Delta variant become a little bit more of a challenge than we had hoped it would. It's much more transmissible, and we have seen our numbers react correspondingly. They, we, to give a sort of an idea of how we've changed in a year, this date last year, when we were heading into the, it was still in the summer months when our numbers were climbing pretty substantially. Our seven-day rolling average of new cases was 63. Today, a year later, they're 77. And the one I think that catches our eye the most is the number of hospitalized patients who had been diagnosed with COVID-19 was 85. Today, in our, all the hospitals in our community, that number's at 132. Now, the challenge with the hospitalization of COVID patients is being met better today than it was a year ago. Our hospitals do just heroic work when it comes to treating the people that come in with COVID issues effectively and efficiently. Our challenge is, there are a lot of people during the COVID peak for the last year and a half, they have delayed surgeries, things hips, knees, and some other things that are semi elective, and those individuals are in those hospitals as well. So when you compound the challenge of our healthcare workers by adding folks that have been delaying processes and procedures, they're really, they're really running ragged at the hospitals. But we do monitor those numbers. I will tell you that the difference this year and last year, this year, we've got a tool that is within arms' reach for all of us to use, and that is the vaccine. If, for whatever reason, you can't or don't want to take the vaccine, that's fine, that's a personal choice. But I would urge you that if you don't take the vaccine, get a mask, and not just a surgical mask, get a KN-95 or an N-95, something that will protect you as the wearer of receiving any transmissible virus. And I'll tell you this, I get it, this thing, for some reason, I've never seen anything like it in my life, but for some reason and somehow, this all became politicized. It boggles my mind. This is a health issue, not a political issue. But because I understand that there aren't a lot of people that are going to put 100% faith in what anybody in a government environment tells them, don't get that shot because I urge you to. I'm not going to urge you to get the shot. What I urge you to do is go see your doctor. Ask your doctor. That's the individual that you and your family trust the most. And if you love anybody on this earth, spouse, mom, dad, brother, son, whatever it is, ask your doctor about the medical viability of you being able to take a vaccine, and then make that decision after talking with your healthcare professional, not with a mayor. So enough said about COVID. We're going to continue to deal with it. It's not going away in the next day or two. It's something that we are, as a community, as a state, and as a country, and as a world, we're going to have to deal with this for a while. So I pray that you will all talk with your physician and deal with it the way you see best for your family. All right. Next up, we've got Elizabeth Barfield from the auditors department, and she's going to be presenting an audit to us. Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, everyone. I am here to talk about the results of the audit that I recently completed at the Trade Center. We did a vendor audit. The vendor was Spectra Food Services and Hospitality. The audit was requested by Haley Tillery, the Trade Center director, and it was approved by council back in October of 2020. Let me tell you just a little bit about Spectra. They provide the management of food and beverage concessions and catering to the Trade Center. The term of their contract is generally for five years, and they've been with the Trade Center for approximately seven years. When we started the audit, we looked at, the first thing we did was we looked at the contract between the Trade Center and Spectra. And there was a blurb in the contract that stated that the audit could only be done for a 12-month period. So the 12-month period that we looked at was January 20th through December, January 2020 through December of 2020. Now, I don't know if any of you are noticing, wow, that was during the height of the pandemic. What in the world could you possibly have been doing at the Trade Center during the pandemic? But not to worry about that, we had a lot of financial records that we could look through. But in addition to that, the other side of the coin was the Trade Center personnel and I talked, they had years of financial data that we could go and refer to. So in actuality, what we did was we looked at 2017 through 2019, in addition to 2020. So in total, we looked at approximately four years of information. There were three things that surfaced throughout the review. Number one was inconsistent charges from month to month. Let me explain a little bit about what I'm talking about. Now, the Trade Center receives a tremendous amount of financial information from Spectra on a monthly basis. They receive financials, they receive invoices, they receive a lot of statistical information, and it can be quite overwhelming. But what we focused on in the audit was looking at, number one, the invoice for Spectra's management fees, and number two, we looked at their financial statements. Their financial statements were in the form of an income statement. Now, let me explain to you what an income statement is. It is an itemized listing of what brings in revenue, and it is an itemized listing of the expenses to generate that revenue. So it's very much like a grocery store receipt. Whenever you go to the grocery store, you get your receipt when you ring up, and you've got a listing of everything that you've been charged for. If you look at the receipt just one at a time, you go, yep, that's what I bought, that's what I put in my refrigerator. But if you take those receipts and you start laying them down next to each other, you've got a lot of very valuable information. You can see, okay, this is how much I spend on bread, this is how much I spend on eggs, this is how much I spend on meat or anything else. What happens, though, is you go, holy smokes, what happened with eggs this time? Is the price wrong? Well, or maybe the price has gone up. And you know what you can do, is you can make decisions based on that, that maybe the next time you go to the grocery store, we're going to cut back on the eggs that we purchase. So that's the value in having consistent numbers with all of your charges from month to month. We were not finding that with our financials. When we started looking, what we found was, for example, telephone expenses. The number was huge. We kind of dove into that and took a look, and what we found was what we weren't just paying for one month of telephone expenses, we were paying for three or four months of telephone expenses at a time. So we weren't getting an accurate view of what our telephone expenses really and truly were. Now, although the Trade Center was paying Spectra on time, with Spectra paying multiple months at a time, they were also paying late fees. And those late fees were being passed on to the Trade Center. The second issue that we encountered was numerous credits received from the vendor. Now, a credit, you think, wow, that's kind of a good thing. It means there's been a refund, maybe there's been an error, or maybe they're giving us an incentive or a discount. And when you look at one receipt, you go, wow, that's great, I'm not having to pay as much. But again, when you come back and you lay all of those receipts down, and you start comparing, and you see a large number of credits, you start asking yourself, what's going on here? And what we did was what we found were that we were actually prepaying a lot of expenses before they were actually incurred. What happened was those expenses never were incurred, and Spectra would turn around and give us our money back. The third issue that we found were calculation errors in Spectra's own management fees. A few minutes ago, I told you there were two documents that we focused on. We focused on the invoice of the actual management fee, and we focused on the financials. When looking at the invoice for the management fee, we found that the calculations were many times incorrect. The calculation is based on the activity of that month, the amount of revenue that comes in, various different indices. Those calculations were incorrect, and many times, at Spectra's detriment, they were actually undercharging the Trade Center. Now, although overall they were undercharging the Trade Center, there were issues where they were overcharging us, and very responsively, Spectra was giving us a refund vis a vis another one of those numerous credits we were receiving. The recommendations after completing this audit are really very, very simple. It's simply fine tuning our review process, taking a look at invoices prior to them being paid so that we understand exactly what is being paid. When we receive our financials on a monthly basis, it is up to us to sit down immediately and compare it to prior month's financials, to make sure that the amounts are consistent, to make sure that the calculations are calculated as we think they should be calculated, and to ask any questions so that they can be resolved immediately prior to the next month's financials. We also need to minimize the prepayment of expenses. Sometimes that cannot be avoided, and many times, in different industries, that is a standard. But I believe that we need to minimize that, and that any prepayment of expenses needs to be authorized and given the approval by the Trade Center director before it happens. They also need to understand how that prepayment is calculated, when the expenses are expected to be incurred, and if not incurred, when she will receive a refund. Overall, I communicated with the Trade Center throughout the audit, and now that the audit is complete, based on what Haley Tillery has been reporting to me, the conversations with Spectra have been moving forward in a very positive direction. Some of these review processes have been implemented. Expectations have been placed on the table. I don't want to say that the lines of communication have been open, because they've always been open with Spectra, but now they're just focusing a little bit more on the financial aspects of the relationship. So I think the audit overall was a very positive experience. And that is it.
Elizabeth, thank you. Another good job, we appreciate it. We've got Haley here from the Trade Center. Did you have anything that you wanted to add? Okay. All right, do we need to receive that report? So if we can get a motion from the council to receive the audit report? All right, motion from councillor Crabbe?
Second.
And second from councillor Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Great. Elizabeth, thank you. All right, we are going to pull up an item from the city manager's agenda, because we've got some people here and a number of our law enforcement and public safety personnel, and we want to get them back out there on the street. But we have had a local citizen who is no stranger to supporting law enforcement in this community, Mr. Paul Voorhees, has requested to be allowed to make a donation of a couple of new items of technology that are geared for one reason and one reason only, that is to keep our officers safe and to keep the people in our community safe in the event that there is a confrontation. So I'm going to invite Mr. Voorhees and the representatives from Bolo Wrap, and any of, I guess, I see our sheriff here, and I saw our police chief, if they want to come up as well, in case they have any comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good morning.
Good morning. Mark Twain said that the two most important days in our lives is the day we were born and the day we realized why. Our law enforcement, our first responders, all our public safety, they realized why they were born. They were born to serve. This wrap technology impressed me so much, because it can save careers and it can save lives. It's just a no-brainer. And with that Columbus blue, with the finances of Ranger Joe's, we're going to donate 12 in the local area, two will come to Columbus, and y'all can decide how you want them to go out. But I would pray that somehow we would find the money to adequately supply our law enforcement and public safety, these Bolo Wraps. It's just something I think that could really be a blessing. Thank you. And I want to introduce you to Paul Nanley. He is the one that helped put this together for us, and he's from Bolo Wrap Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Voorhees. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Paul. We could not do this without Paul and Joe, who reached out to me, I'm vice president of Wrap Technologies and charge of investor relations for the company. We are a public company, and when Paul reached out to us, saying how much he loved our company and wanted to support and do anything he could to help us, we obviously were very pleased with the opportunity to present in front of you and all the law enforcement that are here today. So I want to thank Paul, I want to thank you, and I want to introduce Don DeLuca, who will give the presentation now. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Did 33 and a half years in law enforcement, and most of it as a chief, so I'm kind of familiar with this dias, so it's glad to be back. I'm here today with Mario Knapp, retired major of Miami-Dade Police Department, our vice president of overall training. Mario in the back. Dave Morgan, one of our master trainers, who will discuss virtual reality later on today, and Eric Lor, a local gentleman lieutenant with La Grange Police Department. I'm here today to talk about wrap technology and the Bolo Wrap specifically, and its importance in policing today in 2021. Today, as law enforcement, we're challenged because of the optics of what we do and how we do it. We go from talking to somebody, and their next step is a pain compliance tool. All the tools we carry are very important, but if we have to rely on pain compliance, and there's another option out there, the question is, why not? Three and a half years ago, I started with the company, explaining the use of this device. Today, we're in over 550 departments nationally across the country, and it's growing. We have quite a footprint in the Atlanta region here, from La Grange, Georgia Tech, Covington, and it just goes on. So I'm very proud to be back here today to kind of walk you through a PowerPoint. So what I'm going to try to explain to you is, you call the police because you need help. Somebody in your family's in a medical crisis, they haven't taken their medicine, mental health issue, whatever it may be. And when you go from talking to the pain compliance, the outcome's not always what you want. I called you here to help my family, and you hurt them, secondary injuries. So this is a remote restraint from 10 to 25 feet, which can securely wrap somebody to take them into custody. So the aim area is elbows to wrists, thighs to ankles. So, sir, if you could help me with this here? You have a clicker? Ah, there you go. Here are current options. The verbal commands I talked to you about, you know, please, stay still, we're going to take you to the hospital, and if they don't comply, we use one of these options. So we're not replacing them, as I said, we're going to displace the use of that, and this is where the Bolo Wrap comes in. The first thing you would do is take the device, and you would aim it. Very simple, you turn it on, it vibrates so you know it's on, it's got a line laser for target allocation. Where you put this is exactly where it's going to go. You have a charging handle, you'll hold it low so it doesn't look like any other device. You push the button, and out comes the seven-and-a-half-foot Kevlar cord, faster than the eye can This is the device itself, I kind of walked you through it. It's colored like any other non-lethal, it's yellow, and it can go on the back of your vest, it can go in a slot pocket or anywhere. Very simple to use, you turn it on, like I said, the button, charge the handle, push the button, it goes, turn it off, and you can drop the cartridge. Seven-and-a-half-foot Kevlar cord at the end is two little anchors that have little hooks on them, number 10 Fisherman's Hook is what they call it, meant to grab on clothing or tether. It secures you. If you start to resist, you will feel it pull into your clothing, and that's another deterrent. I'm going to show you a couple of videos here in a moment, which actually shows live body cam footage where the officers had successful deployments. It's important to understand where the line laser is, is where it's going to hit. Carry options, as I mentioned. Tempe Police Department was very fortunate to do a demo with the police chief, the city manager, and the mayor and council. The next day, the next day, they actually went out and this event happened. This man is carrying a stun gun, walking around one of their busiest streets. You might have to click on that one there. Thank you, sir.
Hey, what's up, man? Hey, you doing all right? Don't walk out in front of the, don't go across traffic, man. Hey.
Tempe Police, get on the sidewalk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you have an ID on you? Tempe Police, stop!
Hey, guys, I'm in a Bolo.
Hey, stop walking! Stop walking! You're going to be wrapped! Stop walking! Stop walking! Get on the ground!
Drop what's in your hand!
You will be dazed if you do not drop it!
That works really well, though, like, that was, that was...
Ready?
Ready? One, two, three, stand up. Just over this one. Have a seat, okay, bud? Good? All right, thank you.
So the bottom line, that's a safe way. Before the Bolo Wrap, you would have had to go hands-on, altercation takes place, somebody might get injured. Or you rely on electronic device, where somebody obviously gets controlled over them, and they could fall over and have a secondary injury. We have about 70 of these videos reported back to us with successful outcomes, and I think that's what we're looking for, is to give all officers the best tools, given the climate and the time of policing today. This one here, it's suicide by cop, he's asking the officers to kill him.
Why does it not be like that, man?
I just want to die right now, man. I don't want to leave no more.
I got the Bola.
We're not going to shoot you, man.
I'm strapped, bro. I'm strapped. I got it on me.
All right, Bola, Bola, Bola.
He can't find you back.
Full deployment.
Oh, you just get back down.
I don't know what happened.
I'm glad with you, I think you did good, you did.
Come on, man. We ain't got to talk about you.
I want to die, man.
I want to leave.
We don't want you.
I thought I was a bullet for her, I was going to take it like a man.
We're not going to shoot you.
Here, come over here, side of the street.
We, but we're not going to let it happen while you're with us, you understand that, sir?
Is there any threat?
Just come back over here, okay?
Yeah, you get it. All right, here, come on over, we're going to have you take a seat, yes, car.
I want it all, shoot me, she's suicide by cop.
So you may remember a few years back at Georgia Tech, the young man who called the police on himself with a mental health crisis, wanted suicide by cop. He had the Leatherman's Tool in his hand, non-threatening, but he started to dance, and the only device they had was a firearm, and they shot and killed him. This is a scenario, I tell you, that's more often played out in America, is where people are in a mental health crisis, they're not being cooperative, and your challenge, do I go hands-on now with the optics of how it looks, or do I try to restrain them and have that three to five seconds where they're saying, what just happened to me? And it seems to be, this is one of the answers we need. We're currently in over 560 departments, and there's a footprint, like I said, in the Atlanta region here. As I mentioned about Georgia Tech, they have since gone forward, they bought the Bola Wrap, they've also purchased our, not purchased, they're testing our virtual reality platform. Like you to take a look at this, you know, we talk about training, and I was a chief for many years and president of the International Association Chiefs of Police. Training is one of the most expensive things we do and time-consuming for our personnel. See, the manager here, we come to you with budgets, hey, we want these things, we need these things. But if you could cut training in half and have twice the retention, why wouldn't you consider it? The officers we're hiring today have grown up in this world of virtual reality.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... Our intuitive operator interface is quick to learn and easy to navigate. And our customized controllers are modeled to replicate all of the essential tools found on an officer's belt. And when using our state-of-the-art Reality Rewind function, trainers and trainees can replay and review each session, employ two-way voice recording, and review shot placement, trajectory, and accuracy from any angle or vantage point. The Wrap Reality system is compact, simple to set up, and easy to use. Any agency, no matter the size or location, now has the opportunity to effectively and efficiently train their officers with state-of-the-art tech at an affordable rate. So I invite you now to step in, take a good look around, and see for yourself why the future of police training is already here.
First, I'd like to open up to any questions, if you have any. And Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Mr. Manager, thank you for your time in advance.
Absolutely. And before we get to the questions, I wanna recognize our state senator, Randy Robertson. He's also a retired law enforcement officer. We appreciate you being here this morning, sir. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions about the, the, the way it operates, the way it works. Let's say you have an individual and you decide to restrain him, you shoot, wrap around the legs. And then to get the arms, would that require another cartridge or another officer shooting from there?
So, it's up, it's up to your, how you train your officers. You might ask them to shoot it, you know, discharge towards the arms or the legs. But the big advantage we have is once the cord slaps them, they're in this ooda loop. For three to five seconds, they don't know what happens and they actually become compliant. In most of our videos, you see them look down. So you have to have a plan in action, your training unit, I'm sure, and I saw the gentleman from your department here, they're gonna train your officers. Once it's discharged, you've gotta move in. You know, it's not an observer sport, you know, you've gotta still take them into custody, but you've restrained fifty percent of them. I like the legs, some people like to wrap around the arms. And it gets tight enough around the arms, but you could still move the wrist like we did on the suicide by cop. So it's really your agency's, how they decide to train. And I might mention about training while I have this opportunity, we'll train your internal trainer for your agency at no cost right now. And then they can train the rest of your agency on their own once they're certified.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council? Well, you know, I think, first of all, we wanna thank Mr. Paul Voorhees for donating a couple of these. So it'll give our, our team an opportunity to utilize them and evaluate them and determine if they are in fact, what they appear to be, and so that it will keep our officers safe. I mean, to me, that's, and I think to this council, that's, that's one of the most significant things that we, we look for in, in the training and the tools we, we provide for those individuals. Counselor Thomas?
Good morning. Are the, is the training that you are providing also provided through our Post certification in Scythe? Or is this gonna be a local training session?
Okay. Eric, is this certified post-training that we give? Come forward, Eric. So, the short answer is no, it's not post-certified. But what we've done is gone to LaGrange and other nationally accredited agencies as a template in the state to pass out policy that can be replicated throughout the Georgia. But obviously, right now, we're not post-certified, but it's something we could pursue.
Yeah, I'm Lieutenant Eric Lord, LaGrange Police Department. We've been using this device since 2018. And I'm gonna work with Heather at Wrap Technologies to work with the director at Post. We can get this pre-certified, so we can certainly get folks post-credit for this, absolutely. As long as the instructors that are teaching the course are also general instructors for Post.
I noticed when you put up the map that there were a number of locations in Georgia that have this. And I, I was just wondering what the connection was. We're going to, we are being asked to receive, and I can't imagine we'll turn it down, two devices. And those two devices will be used by the police department and the sheriff's office, is that the plan?
You're giving two to the police department and two to the sheriff's office?
We're giving several away, twelve at least, maybe more. Two in Columbus, one at Fort Benning. We're giving the school district one, one to Harris County, one to Troup County Sheriff, I'm talking about sheriffs. And we, we'll raise the money to get more, but that's what we, we have the funds to do that now. But also, today at one o'clock, we're gonna have a get-together at Doubletree and they'll be able to demonstrate, anyone that wants to come, the virtual reality part. And we're gonna feed, so it'd be a good reason to come. But this is, come from my heart. And this is an effort of love. And I will help you raise money if you need to, but we need to get these in our, in the right hands.
Well, and I know that some of the places you have named, we have a very close working relationship with. And so that, that all adds up for me. Thank you so much.
I remember riding with law, law enforcement officers and the, and the decisions they have to make in a fraction of a second can change their lives, ruin their lives. And also, it could help hurt an innocent person or a suspect. So it's a winner all the way around. It's virtually wrap the gentleman or the lady and handcuff him. It's, to me, it's just, I, I just, but like I tell you, I'm involved, I, I can't sell the product, you have to have a federal firm license to sell it. This is not a business thing for, for our business. This is an effort of just pure love for our law enforcement and the community.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I have some questions about the virtual training. So, Mr. Voorhees has purchased the Wraps, but we would probably need the virtual training. How much is that?
So, I'm gonna ask Dave Morgan to come forward. Right now, what we would do is we'd come out and demonstrate it for your personnel and train your personnel, let them try it out and see if they like it. Because we're still in the process of getting the best thing to market, so we'd like your agency to see the, see how the virtual reality works. And hopefully, some of your members will show up today. But some agencies have purchased, it has to do with the size of your agency, the number of users. And off the top of my head, I can't give you a price right now. If there's any questions about the VR, that's what Dave.
Good afternoon. My name is David Morgan and I got asked about the pricing for virtual reality. So we, we base it depending upon the number of users you have in your agency. And typically, we have a baseline for the hardware. You'd buy the headset and equipment, it's about ten thousand dollars for the equipment. And then there's a subscription, like a license fee, a software licensing fee that goes along with the service. So what the service provides you is forty different types of law enforcement scenarios. And then on a quarterly basis, we release new and additional scenarios for police officers in training. And it's about twenty dollars a month per officer, or a dollar and thirty cents if you look at it, if you break it down per day, divided by the number of days. So it's pretty inexpensive in terms of what we can do. And I like to say, we make the impossible possible. With virtual reality, we can introduce a law enforcement officer into a scenario that they typically could not be introduced to potentially in their entire career. We can put them into a situation where they can be placed in danger safely and have to react with virtual reality. If you think about it, the military has been using virtual reality for years. That's how we teach young warfare operators to fight and train, using drones, et cetera. We've now moved that into the law enforcement arena, where we can train, again, officers safely and remotely, and to give them the skills necessary to perform on the street before they have to actually go out onto the street and be subject to those situations. So I hope that answered your question, ma'am. It's about twenty dollars a month per officer.
Okay, and then you said that the size of the department is, what's the optimum size of department that you think justifies having the virtual training?
So I, I can tell you that we've installed it in agencies where they've had ten officers, all the way up to large metropolitan police departments that have had several thousand officers. In a situation like this, maybe it would be best deployed where it could be used across the county, potentially, where maybe it would be a regionalized type of operation. I see there's a lot of officers here from various agencies, maybe that would be more cost-effective and beneficial. I'm not too sure. But, but that could be something you may wanna consider.
Thank you.
And please come over to the Doubletree this afternoon and, and experience virtual reality. I think you'll really be taken back by the way it really operates. And of course, lunch, too.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't see any other questions. If, if that's the case, I'll call up Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor, just, I'll, I'll take this opportunity to thank the team from Bola Wrap. Especially, thank Mr. Paul Voorhees and Jed Harris for coordinating with our CPD, our Chief of Police, who I know is here. And I had, and I see the, our sheriff is here, Rick Countryman. And I had a brief conversation with the chief. And, and he did, at that time, stress, training will be required. And I know that Chief Blackman will determine the level of training, when, how, and what justification would be required to use Bola Wrap. And so, Mr. Mayor, this is a, and Council, this is a donation. The value of the donation is roughly about twenty-four hundred dollars. And again, Mr. Voorhees, thank you. And Mayor, I see the sheriff and the police chief here, they may want to speak. But after all the questions will have been answered, I, I would ask for your approval to accept the donation.
Okay. Chief, Sheriff, would y'all like to add anything?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I am appreciative to Paul Voorhees and Jed Harris for their contribution and their continued support to the police department, to our law enforcement agencies. I'm appreciative to Bola Wrap Organization for coming to provide the presentation to us this morning. You know, with my background in training, so I, I always, I'm, I'm gonna remain with the mindset to know that training is, is of utmost importance. So we definitely have to assess what's taking place. We saw the video, saw the results there on the video, but we definitely, we have to make sure that we train officers and, and assess this particular less lethal tool to go with, to see how it would fit in, in, in our usage with other tools that we have. Because use of force is something that we do not take lightly, it's something that we train on very heavily. And we, we have standards for use of force. And we always work to ensure that we are within our guidelines regarding use of force incidents. And so, we are definitely appreciative of the kindness of the organization for contributing this Bola Wrap for us, donating it to us. And we will assess it to see how it would be a fit for our department.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff?
Good morning, Council, City Manager, Mayor. I echo what the police chief just mentioned. Very, very grateful that the Bola Wrap and Mr. Voorhees, that they would consider our law enforcement in Muskogee County as part of their trial, trial program. I look forward to speaking with Chief Lou Decmar in LaGrange and Chief Rodney Bryan in Atlanta PD and get with them on, on their overall assessment to also give our Training Bureau opportunity to, to actually look at the product and to, and to, and to go back and to look at the data that's out there on it. And so, if that's something that we decide to engage in, we'd love to go back and, and talk with our, you know, partners across, you know, Georgia that is using, using this product. But thank you so much.
Thanks, sir. And we trust, of course, that our chief and our sheriff are gonna vet this product very carefully and make a determination as to the value it has for our citizens. And I, I guess at this point...
And, Miss Mayor, I, I think the gentleman has another comment.
Okay.
Before the...
We just wanna let you know, when we finish here, we're gonna actually go out front and discharge the device, any of the officers that would like to see it firsthand.
Okay, great.
Thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so, is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the donation? Motion from Counselor Crabbe, second from Mayor Protem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, donation's accepted. Mr. Voorhees, thank you again for your generosity, sir. And before I turn it over to the city attorney, I wanna make mention, again, I know we've mentioned it once, but it was an honor for us to be at GMA yesterday evening to watch our, our city manager installed into the municipal Hall of Fame. It was a proud moment for him, I know, but it was really a proud number for... We'll wait till things simmer down. Don't, don't make us use the Bola Wrap on y'all, y'all need to... Gentlemen, if y'all could, we've got some more business to conduct. Thank you. No, I was just pointing out that, that this, this council and this city should be extremely proud of, of all the contributions, certainly, but also the fact that people from around the state have recognized Mr. Hughley's contributions to municipal government. And it was, it was, it was, it was a big deal. And we congratulate you again. Counselor Huff?
Yeah. Congratulations again, Mr. City Manager, on your induction. I wanted to take a point of personal privilege to say, don't know if you all know, but we had a microburst of wind last night off a far road and trees went down, power went out. So I wanted to personally say thank you to forestry, anybody that was involved with the city, law enforcement, Georgia Power. I was out with them this morning until about one o'clock. So it's a little different when you don't have a storm or anything going on and you start receiving phone calls about the power being out. So I had no idea. So I started riding around last night, trying to find the blue lights to lead me to the problem. So they had it all blocked off. So, again, thank you. They got everything. The forestry cleaned up everything probably in about an hour and a half, two hours. And Georgia Power went to work, took them about a good two and a half, three hours to get it up and running. So I personally thanked them about one o'clock this morning and I headed home to bed. So, thank you again.
Thanks, sir. Alright, we'll go to the city attorney's agenda. The city attorney?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Got a very short business agenda this morning. Mr. Wolverton from Uptown is here, the second reading on the Business Improvement District Amendment. It's ready for adoption.
Motion approved from Mayor Protem, second from Counselor Thomas. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue the vote. Counselors, if you would, please register your votes. Alright, that's approved.
That has passed. Thank you, sir, for being here. One resolution, Mayor, this is because the city is a cosponsor now under the FAA rules with the Airport Commission. They wanna receive this grant, eleven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars.
Motion approved from Counselor Huff, second from the Mayor Protem. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue the screen. Counselors, register your votes. I think we need one more. Okay, that's approved.
That's it. And that's all we had listed today, Mayor.
Alright, going back to Mr. Wolverton, I don't know if he's still here. He is, I just was gonna say, I know he's all smiles have, after recovering the statue that had been missing for the last four months. So we, we appreciate the police department and their work on doing that investigation. By the way, that investigation continues to try to identify the individuals that borrowed her. Alright, next up is the public agenda. Mr. Ricky Fannin, representing Reg- Mr. Ricky Fannin, representing Regency Park Neighborhood Watch, talking about new construction on Forest Road, liquor stores and convenience stores on the south and east side of Columbus and speeding in Regency Park. Hold on just a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ms. Pat Frey was omitted from the public agenda for today, so if she's present, she's with the Homes for Good program, if she can be called up at the, as number six on the public agenda, if you will, please.
We will certainly do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fannin, will, if you would, just state your name, give your address, and you'll have five minutes and you'll be warned when your five minutes is up. If you don't, if you aren't able to cover everything you wanted to cover, you'll be given the opportunity to come back after the Clerk's agenda for an additional three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the City Council and everyone here. I'm going to be brief, I have about three things I want to mention. You're probably already aware of these things, but first I want to thank my Neighborhood Watch captains for showing up, if you'll stand up, please. Thank God. The three things that I want to talk about today is the new construction, liquor stores and convenience stores and speeding in our neighborhood. We see quite a few constructions that's going on on the east side, but most of those facilities are liquor stores. And as you know, we have a lot of crime in east part of our city where we live. And we were concerned about the amount of liquor stores that are being built and popping up in our neighborhood. Because I personally, in our vicinity, counted about at least six to seven, maybe more, of liquor stores in our area. And that contributes to a lot of crime in our area. I know there are other factors such as illicit drugs, but liquor stores are easy targets for poor people that are working at these stores and that puts their lives in danger as well. So that's one of the things that we were concerned about. I know the new construction that is going on now near my home in Regency Park, it's a convenience, I think it's going to be a convenience store, we're not quite sure, but we know that they are applying for a liquor license as well. So that's one more to add to the equation. So we were hoping that the city would look at that at some point to see if we could probably get more facilities that are family oriented in our areas such as acute care centers that are closer for most of the people in our area, especially my neighborhood where we, it's mostly elderly that lives in that, in that part of our neighborhood. Also, there's quite a bit of speeding, I know, for the Regency Park area. And we were hoping, I don't know if this could be done, if speed bumps can be deployed in these areas to alleviate that issue. That's basically all that I have, but I appreciate you letting me bring this to your attention. And again, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fannin, Councilor Barnes?
Mr. Fannin, I appreciate you coming and the rest of the individuals here. This is one of my very active neighborhood organizations. They keep me posted on things. I let them know we, as counselors, can't be everywhere. And so we rely on the citizens and they are very active. And I asked for Rick Jones to come to explain the procedure because the first thing, when they realized the construction, they called me and for fear that it would be a liquor store. And I did call Rick. And I tried to explain to them, when it comes to like a liquor store, they were wondering why they didn't get noticed, whether in that particular case they didn't send out notice to the community. And I want to address what you're saying. When you think about it, in that area on Forest Road, when you drive there, there's a proliferation of those liquor stores there. And they, and not saying anything against them, but some of them do breed problems in specific areas. And it is a concern, it's a definite concern for them. But I wanted to have Rick Jones explain, they wanted to know why they didn't get a notice? And would you explain the procedure? And prior to that, I'd like to address something else. When it comes to the speeding, what I'm telling the majority of my constituents, we don't do the speed bumps anymore. And we gave two presentations on that. But I'd like to find out exactly what remedy do we have? What I normally do is I notify the Police Department, they send out a motor squad. After a couple of tickets, people will temporarily slow down. But speeding is a problem all over here and it's a serious problem. So I'd like for us to come up with a way, we can address that or something that we can tell the, our citizens that we can employ. Because it's a serious problem, especially when children are back in school. I have an area off of Fairview and Marie where there's a bus stop there to pick up children. And these drivers, they don't slow down. And it's a problem. And I've asked Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, I asked, do we have signs? Is there signage that we can do, can we employ, something that would alert the drivers? Because it's a serious situation, especially because the children are back to school. But Rick, could you explain the procedure and why they didn't get a notice? Because they're not required.
Good morning.
Typically, well typically, when a property is rezoned, that's, it stays that classification. When there is a request to rezone property, that's when we actually notify adjoining property owners, basically within a minimum of 300 feet, there is a potential for rezoning to get to occur. But once the rezoning goes into place and that property is zoned, whatever category it may be, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, it remains that way from here, that standpoint, from that point on. There is no notification procedure once that happens. If a property is zoned properly and the proper use can go in that zone, there is no notification process and no requirement for that. The alcohol part may be a little bit different situation, when there is an actual signage that is placed notifying the adjoining property owners at that point, that there may be a request for a liquor license has been made. But from the zoning standpoint, once it's zoned, it stays that way and if, again, if it's illegal use can go in there, such as in this case, if it is a convenience store, and I understand it is from Mr. Pruitt here, that it is to be a convenience store, that's illegal use under a general commercial zone, which this property is. So there is no notification process, that's a long way of trying to say it, but simply put, there really isn't a notification process involved.
And that's why, Mr. Fannin, that you didn't get, you didn't receive a notice. But I, you know, I really appreciate the job that you do because you alert me to things that are going on in that particular area and I appreciate your activism. But, Mr. Mayor, I would like for us to be thinking about, as far as the speeding, we used to do, we used to have, the speed bumps and things. But I think we need to come up, the only alternative now that we have is I alert the Police Department, they send out a motor squad. But people realize that it's a temporary fix and so after about a week or two weeks, it goes right back to speeding. So I think we need to start thinking about what alternative measures that we can credibly employ so that when the citizens have a concern, they realize it's going to be effective and not just a temporary fix.
I agree. And I see Director Newman here, we do have traffic calming methodology that we have, that we can try to utilize. But you're right about the Police Department, they do a fantastic job, but because of the internet and phones, the minute they're out there, word spreads and guess what, everybody's doing a speed limit. So it's, but, but, Mr. Fannin, I mean, it is important, Counselor, that when we have an actively, proactively functioning neighborhood group, we need to do everything we can, try to give them the tools to help them help us make this city safer. Mayor, the City Manager had a comment?
Mayor, I will make that a topic for the end of month work session. So we'll just address it at that point.
Very good. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. To Councilor Barnes' point, I've had a similar request. And one HOA organization said that we have the funds, we can raise the funds to cover the cost of the speed tables, but the city would come up with some way to implement that, to help with the speeding. The, and I understand that there are some logistics that have to be approved along with that. Some roads are geographically, topographically, whatever, they can't withstand, due to legal reasons, a speed table there. So there are some restrictions with certain roads. But if we could take a look at, like Councilor Barnes suggested, that, I appreciate you putting it on the work session, so. But anyway, if there, there's a way to work with the local HOAs to implement something like that, it would save us money, but again, solve the speeding problem as well, or at least slow them down. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Barnes, did you have anything?
I just wanted to take the time to thank Mr. Fannin and the group for coming down and, and I want you to know, I really, really, really appreciate what you're doing in that Forest Road area, because I know there's a lot of problems, but I just sincerely want to thank you for keeping me informed of what's going on. Thank you so much.
Councilor Huff?
Mr. City Manager, I just want to piggyback on that. We get, we have it all over District Three like the other districts. Had a phone call for Councilor Woodson, but since she's out of town in the Kendrick Quarters area, same thing, worried about the school kids off the side streets and some of the people now running around, the buses, while the buses are stopped, some people are going around. So we just need to address the whole issue. Thank you.
Sure. Thanks, sir. All right, next we've got Mr. Paul Olson. Mr. Olson, you know, just give your name and your address.
Yes, sir. My name is Paul Olson, I live at 13830 Uptoy Lane. You're right, Isaiah, I requested open records request and this is the letterhead that I gave Sandra. And it's basically showing that we're not bleeding in Columbus, Georgia, we're hemorrhaging. We have not, less than 100, we have less than 154 police officers. And I talked to Sheriff Greg Countryman back there and they're lacking 56 deputy sheriffs and correctional officers. And if you equate all of them together and you have a level entry of $40,000, times basically about 160, you're talking about $6.4 million. And that money, and I looked and I gave you a copy, Sandra, that you can share with them. This is coming from the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and the OLS has $5.2 million, goes to non-departmental. And I'm thinking like, well, what does that mean? And maybe you guys can explain it after I leave the podium. But it's been misused and used miscellaneous. It's also been the OLS money, that 70% of, when you guys passed this resolution, Mayor, you were one of the signees on that, it was Resolution 226-08, that's 2008. You guys promised the citizens out there that 70% of this money would be dedicated to public safety personnel. Well, I talked to finance yesterday and OLS generates $36 million. So 70% of 36 million is $25 million. And I don't see it. I see it going to the reserve fund and whatever is isn't spent, I talked to you, Mayor, prior to the City Council meeting, and if it's not spent, it's basically going into the general fund. That was not the intention. What I'm going to ask you today, in order to keep this city to where they're the last line of defense our public safety is, is to give them a $5,000 pay raise out of the OLS to do retention, because right now it's being used as nothing but a training ground and people are going to Fort Benning, they're going to outside, outlying cities like LaGrange and so on and so forth. And that wasn't the intent. When Public Safety, FOP, Randy Robertson and Company went in front of you guys, you guys said, hey, we're going to take care of you. Well, it's not taking care of you because it's hemorrhaging right now and it should be a great concern. In my property at Terri's Floors, we, just two weeks ago, we had two catalytic converters cut off of the vans at 5:30 in the morning, couldn't identify the person, it was fuzzy, right across the street from where they had one. So when my son-in-law took it to the muffler, it was 25 catalytic converters that had been cut off. What really troubles me when I'm out delivering on Martin Luther King Boulevard, there is a scrap metal place that's advertising, we buy catalytic converters. Doesn't take a real genius to figure out, if you're putting that out there, you're going to entice every meth head out there to go out there and cut these things off? And it's becoming an epidemic. Same way with air conditioning unit. I've talked to you, Isaiah, one of the largest AC owners in this town went to prison, you know, for stealing air, whole entire air conditioning units. Well, guess what? When they start to miss, it would be real hard to figure out who that is, you know what I'm saying? And so that's, that's the problem that I'm having with that. The other thing is, is that, Mayor Henderson, you are not only the mayor, you're the Public Safety Director and you're also, before being mayor, you were the head of Budget Review Committee. And I'm just asking you, please, because you even have a son in the fire department, public safety personnel need a $5,000 pay raise to retain them. We also need to use that to entice other people because we need police presence in the neighborhoods. When they're talking about neighborhoods, if we had more of a staff, we'd have them patrolling, and I recommended this to Teresa when she was mayor, that if we could have them patrol through the neighborhoods with the flashing lights and everybody knows it, it's going to deter any person out there burglarizing your home. And when you have that many burglaries that we have, guess what? All of our homeowners insurance and all of our business insurance goes up. Same way with when there auto theft is going up, and I swear, there's got to be a syndicate that's going up. And with the murder rate, and I saw that, it's 42 right now. And that's according to the coroner's office and he's the one that signs off on the death certificate. It's an abomination. We're farther ahead now, right? Now in August, we have five months left than what we had on the totality of last year. So I call it the murder capital of Georgia because that's where we are, per capita, okay? That's per person. And that's not a good sign because it's a deterrent for businesses to relocate in Columbus. So I'm asking you, as mayor and City Council, look out because they're the last line of defense for the citizens of Columbus. Thank you very much, God bless you, have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, and we'll get you, we'll answer some of those things.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to get, the City Manager's going to touch on a few of those, but I'll mention to you, you know, just coming back from GMA, I, we're done, I don't have any questions for you, I'm just going to try to clear up some of the information.
But that never happens.
No, sir.
It's only a monologue.
I don't have, you're-
But I mean-
Mr. Olson, you can take a seat.
I would like to have a meeting with you and the City Manager about-
Call my office, call my office. I've never not taken, I'll talk to you, we'll get something set up. Thank you. But we, but we do, we are going to correct a few of the things that you mentioned and just make, make sure the folks know that, you know, number one, listen, we're hyper-focused on Columbus, we're hyper-focused locally on our law enforcement officers, but this is an issue that's going on across not just the state, but across the country. And I, frankly, it's no wonder. I don't know why anybody would want to be a police officer, to be honest with you. The job is tougher now than it ever has been before. There's more scrutiny and there's more challenges. I can tell you that we have, we agree with you that we need to work on, on the pay for police and our sheriff and also for our general government employees. Over the last three years, there's been a six and a half percent increase that we have worked very hard to try to make sure this council has done to, to, to public safety. This last year, we actually threw in, not throw in, we actually added another $2,000 pay increase to the Police Department. And we've also initiated a process by which we're going to do a pay study that will allow us to make sure that our, our salaries are in line with what's going on throughout, throughout the industry. We recognize that our biggest challenge right now with, with law enforcement, with truck drivers, with metro drivers, with employees, we have over 500 vacancies in city government. So what we've got to do is try to look at the compression factors. We've tried to keep pace with what's going on the front end and bringing people in, that has unfortunately and necessarily created a little bit of a squeeze for some of our officers that have been here for eight, 10, 15 years. So we are working on that. And I'm going to ask, Ms. Ellington, if you excuse us just a moment, I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Hodge to come and answer some of those questions. We'll call you up in just a moment.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hughley?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Mr. Mayor, yes. And let me just say that, and I noticed that, you know, Mr. Olson, as he does often, he comes and he drops a bomb at the podium, and then he walks out and won't stick around to hear anything you got to say. And that seems to be a problem looking for a problem, and not a problem looking for a solution. I heard him use the word related to the other local option sales tax, misused money. And, you know, I was at the convention in Savannah, and there was a speaker who said something that stuck with me. He says, "You can't believe everything you think." And obviously, you know, Mr. Olson, he says what he thinks, and then he walks out, and we want to share with him facts, and that's why Deputy City Manager Hodge is at the podium, because facts matter. Facts matter when you believe what you think, but what you think is wrong. And I believe he believes what he thinks, but I wish we could share with him the facts, and maybe during, with the open records request, we will share the facts with him. But we were, and he mentioned 150 police officers. Mayor and I met with the Hub City Mayors and Hub City Managers yesterday, and that's, you know, from Savannah to Augusta to Rome to Macon and so forth. But the Macon Mayor had an opportunity to speak at the Hub City Mayor's, City Managers' meeting yesterday. And the Macon, Georgia Mayor, these are words from his mouth, indicated that they are 150 short, police officers. Yesterday, 150 short. And I say that to say that at the GMA conference, representing 530 cities across Georgia, as I was there with mayors and city managers from all of these cities, and I heard the same story over and over and over again. The same story. From Savannah to Augusta to Brunswick, Macon, Rome, Atlanta, the metro cities in Atlanta, north, south, east and west. The mayor and I sat right next to the mayor of, and city manager of Augusta yesterday, in that Hub City meeting. They were all there. And we meet to share stories, and they're sharing the same story. Their story is no different from Columbus, Georgia. The Macon, in fact, the Macon Mayor said yesterday, you know, yeah, we're 150 short, and I'm just, you know, I'm convinced we're not going to hire 150 officers. He says, "Nobody wants to do this work." He says, "We're not going to hire 150 officers, so we're going to concentrate on trying to deal with the issue of violence." Now, this is just the Macon Mayor talking, but he says 150 short, and we know that we can't, he said, "We know we can't hire them. We're not going to hire them." You know, because they're going to come, and some are going to go, and we are 150 short in Macon, Georgia. So, you know, you just can't believe everything you think. You got to get the facts, and facts matter. And so I'll leave it at that, Mayor. I just had to share that we, I got back late last night from Savannah, as did the mayor, and we just met with these, just in a room, all the Hub City Mayors and City Managers, sharing stories, from ARP funding and spending to police work, to crime, everything. Same story. So when we hear all of this in Columbus, you know, it's, I'm listening yesterday on the news in Savannah, and I'm hearing they've got, they have a crisis situation, crisis the word was used by the news anchor, of hiring school bus drivers in Savannah. He said a crisis. It's no different than, you know, we have problems too. I'm sure they have problems hiring school bus drivers everywhere you go. So I just had to bring the news back to you, that it's not just Columbus, Georgia. It's all over. So you may want to address some of those, that misinformation that was just shared, and then the person walked out.
Particularly the accounting of the OLOS.
Yes, so it's very unfortunate that Mr. Olson continues to provide misinformation and then leave, and we're happy to share with him all of this information. It is obviously public record. The fund balance in the general fund is split between general fund and OLOS. It is a general fund sales tax, but as this council directed us from the very beginning, it is accounted for separately. We provide that information to you each month. The finance director gives you an OLOS report at the end of FY '20. Unassigned fund balance in public safety OLOS was $21 million, a total of 41 days. So it is reported together in our financial report as it is required, but we keep it completely separate and provide that information to council on a monthly basis. The information that he provided about the non-departmental for OLOS and not using it appropriately is completely inaccurate, and that information is provided to council in the budget, and council approves it. Those things that come in non-departmental are things that are not associated specifically with one department. Those things include the debt service on the fire stations that were built, as was approved in the OLOS. It also includes radio Motorola payments that were part of the budget process. Those are paid through a GMA lease program, and so they go to a separate fund. There's also items in there for capital projects, for public safety. Those things could include improvements at the jail. There was an HVAC system that was put at the jail that was $1.3 million. Those kind of CIP projects are actually accounted for in a CIP fund, and so they will show in non-departmental as a transfer out of the general fund going into this capital project fund. So we have complete detail of every expenditure that has ever occurred in the OLOS fund, both public safety and infrastructure, and those can be itemized. We have a report from the very beginning of time, how those were spent, and we're happy to provide that to anyone that would like to see it. So it'd be helpful before individuals come forward and make those kind of statements, that they at least get the information first before they provide those statements.
And Mr. Mayor and council, and to the citizens here, and those watching by television, those are the facts, and the facts matter.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Ms. Teresa Elamene, representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network regarding access to quality health care.
Well, since I was interrupted for, for a display that is outrageous, the city manager had an opportunity to stop Mr. Olson, to let him know.
Ms. Elamene, you are signed up to speak about quality health care. If you have something that this council, and if you can, if you have.
But citizens have to be respected. My name is, you've already started my time.
Yes, ma'am, you've already started your.
Okay, fine, fine. You know, I am going to speak on quality health care, but I say public safety and public health go together, and citizens should not be disrespected by the public agenda being interrupted for a city manager point. It happens too often.
That is not the topic you signed up for. If you're not going to cover the topic.
Stop interrupting me. Stop interrupting me.
No, ma'am, not until you get to your point. If you can't get to your point, we'll consider your time forfeited, and we'll ask the deputies to have you take a seat. Now, please continue.
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Gliss, would you take these documents to be passed out? And the first 12 documents, thank you, the first 12 documents are stapled. And I want to make sure that all of the city council members get the staple documents, Ms. Gliss. The city council members get the staple documents.
She wants the city council members.
Because I only have like 12 of them. I sent all of you a 15-minute video about my experience after taking the Moderna vaccine. I took the Moderna vaccine on July 7th, after my rheumatologist insisted that it was safe. I had been in a medical emergency for a whole month, because I had an adverse reaction to the Moderna vaccine. I reported it to the CDC, they gave me a case number. I reported it to the Moderna company, they gave me a case number, actually two case numbers. It's only a matter of time before there's a class action suit against the experimental vaccine. And in the black community, the attachment that you have is there. We do not need to take the experimental vaccine. I am being attacked by the lawyer from the Emory Healthcare Corporation. He had the silly nerve to send me a letter threatening me to cease and desist, and threatening me with a TRO. I showed it to another lawyer, and he said, "Emory is afraid of you because of what they've done to you. St. Francis Hospital is an Emory hospital. It is a racist hospital founded in 1950."
Ms. Elamene, what do you, what do you want?
I have my time.
No, ma'am, not unless it's something council can help you with.
Oh, yeah, the hospital authority.
This forum is not the place for one individual to make claims against another private industry or another individual. This is not a press conference. This is a place for the public to come ask the city council for some assistance with some issues. And what you're doing is you're levying an attack at an organization that is not here to provide any kind of balancing response. And that's simply not fair. So very respectfully, very respectfully, I would ask you.
But you're running my time, while you're taking my time, and that's not fair.
If you stay to the point and not disparage people who are not here, I will restore your time.
Just like the city manager's disparaged Mr. Olson, who is not here. Let's be fair.
If you, if you, if you don't, I'm talking about fairness, and if you don't see the difference between clearing up some misinformation for 200,000 residents who desperately need to know the facts, and your tirade against one institution, then I'm not going to be able to make it clear for you.
No, it's not one institution.
So I'm going to reset your, to three minutes, and I'm going to ask you to stay on point and not make any criticisms or allegations against somebody who's not here.
I have plenty of copies of the letter from the attorney, from anybody who wants to see it.
Yes, ma'am. And your time has been restored, so please continue.
Thank you. Well, I put a call in to Ms. Thomas yesterday, because I wanted to understand how the hospital authority works. I thought the hospital authority was over the hospitals. I was grossly mistaken, I think. And so I would like to have that cleared up. When I called the number, I found for the hospital authority, they answered at the Muskogee Manor Nursing Home. It's a baffling thing. Columbus is a unique kind of government. I've invited hundreds of people to examine Columbus Consolidated Government, because it is unique. But I would like to understand how the hospital authority works, because I thought that board oversee, was oversight over the hospitals. And that's part of the reason I came today. I would like Ms. Thomas to call me back, because she's a countywide representative, district 913579, in the mayor's office up next year. And as you agree with me, Mr. Mayor, no one should run unopposed. People should have choices, because I'm very disappointed with the way this council is operating, with all this poverty, all the murders, and now you can't even pick up the trash. Who does that? Columbus is unique.
Ms. Elamene, if you'd stick to your point, please, that you registered for. We want you to have an opportunity to say what you want to say, but we needed to stay consistent with what she's.
Well, I know you're trying to gag me, and I have said enough, because this is streaming live, and so it's good that it's live, because I'm not just talking to you, I'm talking to the citizens, so they can stop being bamboozled by all of you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's time's up, time's up for the bamboozles.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Pamela McClary. She's representing the United States Post Office regarding the hiring for the USPS. Ms. Hughley?
I just wanted to say that when information that's not factual is stated at that podium, I have an obligation, a responsibility, to set the record straight. I've done that in the past, and I will continue to do that going forward.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi, Pamela.
Yeah, if you would, just state your name and your address, and we'll, then you have five minutes.
I'm Pamela McClary, and I'm from the United States Postal Service here in Columbus, Georgia. And I have, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Pamela McClary, and I'm here from the United States Postal Service here in Columbus, Georgia, and I have the OIC, the acting postmaster here, Mr. Darrell Bailey, and I'm just going to introduce him. You're going to take a few minutes of your time.
Thank you, sir, Mayor, City Council. My name is Darrell Bailey. I've been with the organization for 26 years, and we're here to try to get employees to come aboard, because we're going into the peak season coming up. We're going into the fall, we're going into the peak season, and we're here, and we are advertising that we are now hiring rural carrier associates, okay? Starts out $19 an hour. You can go to USPS.com, go down to the bottom of the page and click on careers. If you know of anybody, if you, pass the word out, we're here, we are hiring for the United States Postal Service Rural Carrier Associates. Thank you for your time, and we just wanted to put it out there, sir.
Thank you, sir. And we feel your pain. Council Barnes?
Uh-uh. Do you hire retirees? Pamela, can I, anybody come on? What's the details? Give us the details.
There's no age limit. You can definitely come on.
Mary.
You look good in that uniform.
Look, the boys' family's getting better and better. It's coming up on Christmas time. My wife and I, we don't want to be hurt, so I asked Pamela, the postal service that works very well here with the city of Columbus, Georgia, and when Pamela called me about two weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
I said, "Something like this here, you need to put on a public agenda, because there are a lot of people in Columbus, because of the pandemic and whatever, who really need to work."
Yes.
And so this is really a God's sent here. And so now, and Pamela, thank you for coming in, and sir, thank you for coming as well. Would you explain the details? How would a person, what do they need to do?
Actually, you can go to USPS.com, go down to the bottom of the page, click on careers. You will go in and set up your user ID and password. You save that user ID and password. You go on every other day to search for jobs. You will create you a profile, which is basically your resume. Within that resume, they will ask you for your last five years of your work history. You can't leave anything blank. If you were unemployed during a certain time within the five years, you have to put in there unemployed, or the application process will kick you out. Basically, once you get your profile created, then you will continue, they will also ask you to take an assessment test. And once you take that assessment test, then we correspond via email everything. And once you take that assessment test, then uh you, we correspond via email everything. So, basically, once you see which job that you are interested in, you will hit the submit button to apply. Start your career off. I think it's one of the greatest organization, one of the greatest organizations in the world. Been around for a while, I've been there twenty-six years, so one of the greatest organization is a good career.
Well, I'm glad that you went through the details, cause ob- obviously, there's gonna be a lot of people that might have been a little bit reluctant because they've been unemployed, but it's really necessary for them to reflect that because it's not necessarily anything that, that's against them if they're not employed, considering the, um, the impact of the pandemic here.
Yes, sir.
And so I just want to thank you all very much again. So, you're not taking, are we taking retirees? What are you doing?
We'll take retirees, sir.
Thank you so much. And Pamela, thank you always, keep me in the loop with what's going on, I appreciate you.
All right, thank you so much. Have a good day.
Hold on just a minute, sir. Yeah, ma'am and Ms. Pam, uh, we have some counselors that'd like to say something.
Thank you all for being here. It was Darryl Bailey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Pamela McClary?
Yes, sir.
Are you related to Thomas McClary, the guitar player of the Commodores?
No.
Okay. Okay, hadn't seen that name much in life now. Um, it says nineteen dollars an hour, rural carriers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, okay, and then go to USPS dot com and go to careers?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And follow it down from there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, I'll get the word out.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yes, sir.
Have a good day.
Next on the, uh, public agenda is Mr. Eugene Gilbert. Talking about the high cost of ticketing events. Welcome, sir. If you would, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Eugene Gilbert and I'm actually from Atlanta, Georgia. So, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and all council members for giving me this opportunity. I have a company, the Milestone Marketing Distribution Group, and we produce the event. We actually created the event, it's called the Original Battle of the Bands. We started in nineteen ninety-four in Atlanta, Georgia, at Georgia Tech University. We did forty thousand people in the rain and we've taken the show all over the country. A gentleman from this community named Dallas Austin approached me many years ago about a movie he had called Drumline, and we produced that movie for him. What the Battle of the Bands is, it's an exhibition of high school and college marching bands, and we do work with community dance teams. As I said earlier, we produce this event um at large stadiums such as the Georgia Dome, Mercedes-Benz Stadium, Superdome, every major venue in the southeast. And we have been here at Memorial Stadium years ago. This year, we decided to embark on our tour again. This is our twenty-seventh year of touring the Battle of the Bands. And um many of the community groups here reached out for us and said, "Hey, can you guys make us a part of your tour this year?" So, we agreed. We were here in twenty nineteen, let me just back up, we were here in twenty nineteen at Connett Stadium. The ideal location to produce the Battle of the Bands is A.J. McClung Memorial Stadium. But the reason we're not there is because of high ticketing prices. Our ticket charge is fifteen dollars. And what we do with that fifteen dollars is we allow the participating high school, middle schools, community organizations to make a profit of five dollars off of every ticket they sell. Over the years, this has amounted to millions of dollars in communities all over the country. When we here in twenty nineteen, we sold five thousand tickets at Connett Stadium through the schools, and the stadium was too small. We want to be at A.J. McClung Stadium. But the reason we cannot do so is because of what we call excessive predatory ticket pricing. A normal deal for a stadium is base rent versus a percentage. You have that. It's five hundred dollars versus ten percent. Me, as the producer promoter, we have all the fees related to the event. Cleaning, staffing, ticketing, um, police, EMS, all expenses related to that event, we pay. But what you have here, you have a box office fee. In many communities, they call it a facility fee. It's an additional charge to the ten percent rent. It's not a percentage, it's not scalable. It's three dollars and fifty cent on every ticket. What's three dollars and fifty cent? Doesn't seem like a lot, but if we sell ten thousand tickets, we would give to Columbus Parks and Recreation, to Ticketmaster, thirty-five thousand dollars out of our gross sales. So, if we gross a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of ten thousand people, the city of Columbus, Parks and Recreation would receive fifteen thousand dollars. Ticketmaster, unearned income, they did nothing to help us in any capacity to generate a sale, will receive again thirty-five thousand, that's fifty thousand. And I'm, I'm just using simple numbers and not talking about the tax part of it. So, that's fifty thousand dollars out of one fifty. Our commitment is to this community, to the high schools that participate, to the community dance teams that participate, paternity, sororities, anybody wanna fundraise with us, they have an opportunity. In that scenario, they would receive fifty thousand dollars. We also use the Battle of the Bands as an opportunity to introduce the community to college marching bands. We work with all of them, Alabama State, Florida A and M, Southern University, Talladega, Tuskegee, and we bring at least two college marching bands. And yes, we bear that expense too. They're not free. We pay them an honorary, that could be five or ten thousand dollars. We pay for buses and we pay them meals. So, in this scenario, because we have to pay a box office fee of thirty-five thousand dollars, we cannot do the event. We would end up in the red. So, what I'm simply asking for, simply asking for, we don't mind paying rent. That's a deal you pay pretty much at every stadium, whether that's the University of Maryland Stadium, College Park, Maryland, University of T- um, Tennessee Chattanooga. I was there yesterday. That's a typical deal, base versus ten percent. Is that my time?
Yes, sir, and-
Okay, can I just tell you what I want?
Well, I, I tell you what I was gonna suggest, uh, first of all, I appreciate you coming, uh, and, and I, despite my taking a little bit of exception to the term predatory pricing, uh, I would ask if you had had an opportunity to sit down with our city manager. Uh, cause typically what'll happen is if there's a, uh, something that is community oriented, uh, if you go to our city manager and he'll bring the deputy city manager in and they'll talk with the facilities manager and they'll usually try to work something out. So, uh, you, you're welcome to come back for another three minutes, I'm gonna let the city manager make some comments. But um, uh, at, at the end of the clerk's agenda, but I would, I would suggest that you get with his office and, and this, I think this can be resolved.
Um, well, I'm here for a solution. We want to come to Columbus.
Well, I, and, and Mayor, thank you, I was gonna ask the gentleman, um, did you talk to Holly? Did you talk to Rob Landers? Who, who, who have you talked to?
Typically, we dealt with miscuts over at the box office and there's just been no negotiation. It's three fifty, that's it. Now, yesterday, I did receive a call from Rob, and that was my first time hearing from Rob, I was not aware of Rob. And um, he did talk about what could be done, but at the time, I was in Chattanooga and I just felt it be important for me to be here to speak with you. But I am amicable, I'm looking for a solution, there are many, many organizations here that want us here. So, I'm, I'm here today, I would love to speak to him today.
So, let, let me just um, um, recommend that you talk to Rob Landers and um, his boss, his deputy city manager, Lisa Goodwin.
Okay.
And then if I need to be involved, uh, they, they'll let me know.
Okay, okay, I'll reach out for Rob, so can I return?
And that's, that's Rob Landers right there.
Oh, that's Rob, okay, all right, all right. Well, let me hear Rob.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right.
All right, uh, and, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Barnes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gilbert?
Mr. Gilbert, I'm sorry. I, I, I just wanted to comment on what the, the mayor said. One thing I can attest to, when it comes to anything for the community, and you mentioned the marching bands, everything that you said in your, in your talk was for the community, were for individuals. And I can attest, cause I've done a number of community things, all, all of us have, this is a community-oriented city. And as the city manager asked, did you talk to Holly Browder? So many people have done so many things through Parks and Recs, and if it's for the community, that, we work with you. And so I'm so glad that, um, that was brought up, but I just wanted to amen what the mayor said and what the, the first thing out of the city manager's mouth was, did you talk to the director of Parks and Recs, Ms. Holly Browder? Please do. Because we are, when it comes to being focused for the community, things to help the community, you saw the post office even here offer jobs. And so please, in the future, just notify the department or the city manager here.
Sure, sure.
Cause what you're doing is an excellent thing.
Thank you, thank you, it's been twenty-seven years.
And we just appreciate, and I also wanted to say thank you to you for, for what you're doing as far as the, uh, community, going in all the communities. Cause that's really, really, if you really wanna know, that's what, that's the nuts and bolts, that's what makes every city great, getting the community together, reaching down and helping people. And so I appreciate you, but please, again, start with um, Ms. Holly Browder or, I just see him here, uh, Rob, yes.
Sure.
Cause we're community-focused here.
Okay, thank you again.
No, thank you so much.
All right.
Thanks, sir. All right, next is um, Ms. Pat Frey, I guess with a quick update on Home for Good. And I, and I've got a, as Ms. Frey's coming up, I, I know my wife and I during National Night Out had gone down a road and seen a huge amount of, of furniture and stuff being put out, and of course, it concerned me, I was thinking, I knew it was an eviction, I, I was thinking more about the, uh, the, the, the challenge of picking it up, so I contacted Mike Criddle. Well, Mike went by and looked at it and met the woman, seventy-five-year-old woman who'd been evicted, sleeping in a lawn chair under a umbrella. Immediately, I was in the doctor's office, I called Pat, within fifteen minutes, she said, "We've got the woman, we're putting her in emergency housing and we're taking care of her." So, publicly, thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city manager, for, for having me. And Lindsay's passing out something, just to, uh, wanted to announce, uh, very happily that, uh, the homeless task force, um, from Augusta, Georgia, will be visiting our fair city on August the twenty-fourth. Um, they've requested, um, actually, this is the third that we've had scheduled, um, and they've had some, some challenges in meeting it, uh, with, on their end. But they have requested an opportunity to come and meet with members of our, uh, community service providers, homeless service providers, our, our city leadership, um, our continuum of care leadership, and, uh, just to see how it is, our housing authorities, how it is that we have managed to do collaboration across providers, across service lines, across every part of the community to make sure that we meet the needs of the community and those experiencing homelessness. Um, they will arrive at, um, in Columbus about eleven-thirty via bus. We're, today, we have twenty-two confirmed, we're expecting, we have a limit of thirty people to come, but, um, we're expecting anywhere around twenty-five to twenty-seven is what we're projecting. They'll arrive at our Home for Good office, which is in the First Presbyterian Church at eleven-hundred First Avenue. We'll serve lunch, the mayor has agreed to do a meet and greet. Please encourage everyone else who can come, um, to please be there. And then we'll take a tour of some providers, um, talking about different services that are provided and how we use data to drive decisions and how we align and plan for projects and realign projects to meet the needs of the community, not the needs of the provider. Um, and then we'll come back and talk about how this hall started back in two thousand nine, um, with Chief Wethering, then Mayor Wetherington calling together the task force, um, to, to, to put together a plan to end homelessness and how we've, how we've evolved, um, um, since that point. Again, just want to invite everyone to come, um, and we'll, uh, I'll send out an email to everybody just to get a head count for, for lunch, cause we are gonna serve you lunch. I'll take any questions, other than that, that's all I have.
Pat, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Frey? Thank you for the work that y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Uh, it's, and we've heard, as the city manager was mentioning, we talked to mayor from other communities. We all suffering from the same challenges, and I gotta tell you, I think we're handling, thanks to the continuum of care and Home for Good, uh, we're, we're doing better than most in trying to make sure we accommodate, uh, those that need our help the most.
Well, when they called to ask to come and see how we do it in Columbus-
That's a good sign.
I, uh, I just said yes and then said, "We'll figure it out from there." Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move to the city manager's agenda. Mr. Hugley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we've, um, covered item number one. Item number two is the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two Georgia Department of Transportation Planning Contract for two hundred seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-four cents with a twenty percent match of sixty-nine thousand, three eighty-one, thirty-one. We're asking your approval.
All right, there's a motion, second approved. Is there any discussion? If hearing none, please, uh, cue the vote and counselors, please register your votes. That's approved.
Uh, got a Georgia Emergency Management Association Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant, uh, it's forty thousand, two hundred and one dollars, uh, we're asking your approval.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. And counselors, you can register your votes. That's approved.
Uh, next, I've got the, um, Midland Commons Tax Allocation District Fund Grant.
There's a motion from Counselor Barnes and a second from Counselor Huff to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. Counselors, register your votes. That's approved. Now, I see Mr. Flora and Mr. Whitman, did, did you have any quick comments?
Thank you.
Yeah, that'll work. Thank y'all for your patience.
Uh, I've got, uh, state of Georgia State Fiscal Recovery Fund application, and let me just explain quickly, um, so we're asking approval, uh, to, um, apply for and if awarded, accept American Rescue, uh, planned funds, uh, that were allocated through the state. This has nothing to do with what was allocated directly to Columbus. Uh, this is a big pot of money that went directly to the state that we have an opportunity to compete for, uh, in addition to what was allocated directly to Columbus as an entitlement city. And so we're asking your approval to apply for some of those dollars and if awarded, accept those dollars.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem. I heard a second from Counselor Huff, I believe. Uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. Counselors, register your votes. Okay, that's approved.
I've got, uh, purchases, uh, fuel pumps and controls, um, we, uh, it's an RFP and we're asking your approval that we can move forward with this as an RFP.
All right, there's a motion to prove A through D. Did you, did we want C pulled? All right, we'll pull C. Is there any others that need to be pulled? All right, so, uh, there's a motion and a second to approve A, B, and D. Any discussion? All right, uh, I guess we just need to take a voice vote on just those, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. City Manager, if you would, cover those. I've got a couple of counselors that, is this to the purchases? Mr. Huff?
I want to go back, uh, Mr. on number, I think it's five. Uh, will the monies in number five be available for some of the people that are needing monies to not be evic- for evictions and things of that nature?
Uh, it, it, the, the money, uh, the answer to your question is yes. Um, I, I'm trying to think, it's trillion, maybe a trillion dollars or something, but uh, the governor has appointed a committee and it's in economic development and transportation infrastructure, just a number of different categories. And in fact, I, I know that Representative Kevin Smyer is on the Economic Development Committee. And so, uh, those funds would be available for a number of different categories that would be concerned, us homelessness and just across the board, and so we're gonna go after-
Could I get with you and maybe we get something to put out on CCGTV and everything about the people who are needing the monies, not for eviction?
Well, what we need to do is apply for it and get the money first.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, but yeah.
But there is also, uh, the Rental Assistance Fund, which is available- But there is also the Rental Assistance Fund, which is available through the Department of Community Affairs right now.
Okay, that's different, okay.
Yep, so and that will stave, that will stave off some of the eviction processes. They just have to go on that portal, fill out the form. It is applied for by the landlord and the payments are made directly to the landlord. They can also, they can also have it go straight to utility companies if they are also struggling to try to make utility payments. And I think Rob Scott has put out some information just recently about that. And we're working really hard to try to come up with a number of different ways to let people know, because that's a big deal. That can be utilized to keep people sheltered. And frankly, just as critically, it allows the folks that own the properties to not lose them because they can't make the mortgage payments. So it's sort of a win-win. We just need to make sure that all the councilors are aware how to go get that money. And that we publicize it.
Would it be possible for us to get that? I'm just confused with the city manager. That's what I'm talking about.
Well, and I missed part of that conversation, but I will say that, let's talk because, and maybe we need to figure out how to publicize the fact that nonprofits can apply directly for these dollars. They don't have to come through the city.
Yeah, yeah. The piece he was talking about, I'm mixing the two up with the rental assistance.
Yes.
Yeah, to make sure, I want to know what we could do to put out on CCGTV. And then what I could match up with and put out on Facebook and.
In fact, I'm going to.
Publicize so the people in District 3 will know that they don't have to be evicted because their money's out there available.
The mayor and I sat through a session yesterday together on eviction, and I actually brought a packet to give to Rob Scott related to that. So, but yeah, certainly we're talking, but we need to make sure that we're getting the word out because they're our citizens. So we're going to be doing that.
We can even, we've even, the DCA Commissioner, Christopher Nunn, has offered to come here and maybe we could get everybody together, let them ask questions. And he can give you the, straight from the horse's mouth, as it were.
What's it, with the timeframe we're working with, you know?
I think that they have a lot of that money left. I mean, that allocation's been made, they're just, they're just waiting for folks to apply for it.
Yeah. Is there a deadline to apply for the citizens?
I'm sorry?
Is there a deadline for the citizens to apply for that money?
I'm not aware of a deadline, Rob.
Well, why don't we have Rob Scott, Mayor, to come and speak to it?
I may have confused it more than I got.
Thank you for the opportunity. So, the Georgia Rental Assistance Application is currently open to receive applications. It is not closed. As has been expressed, there are several funds, several funds still remaining in that balance. Right now, we are trying to make a serious, serious push to drive people to the opportunity. The moratorium was extended on August 3rd, which was set to now currently expire on October 3rd. One of the things that we've been expressing and trying to communicate to citizens is that this is a process. This is not a magic wand that we can just wave and solve this problem. It's going to take a little time and it's going to take a little effort. So we are encouraging people to start applying for the process as early as possible to be able to take advantage of the state's opportunity.
And the number that I saw posted at the meeting we were at yesterday, I think like 4,459 awards have been made totaling a little over $15 million. So people are going after this money and our people need to get in on it.
Okay.
And the entire pot was more than $550 million. So if only 15 million is to have taken advantage, then there's a considerable portion left that we should still be pressing towards and take advantage of.
Okay, so I can work between the two of you and find out what I need to do?
Sure.
Absolutely. You can reach out to them.
And we will get something, and we will get something out. Because I know Rob and I talked about it last week, about trying to use multiple modes of trying to get this out to the public. Because as we have discovered in efforts and initiatives passed, no one method is going to get to everybody, so. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right, Councilor Crabbe, did you want to ask about C?
I had a question about five also, and I wanted to add, the National Association of Realtors has funds for rental assistance also. So you can go on their website and address, and file for assistance there also. Do we have the projects already in mind for number five?
No.
Okay, that was my question about number five. Do you mind if I go on to C?
Not at all.
Okay. I've had some emails from citizens saying that the automated recycling trucks have been damaging the containers. And I'm just wondering if C is additional containers or replacement containers?
And we have the director here, Michael Cridle.
It's both. We do have some older containers that have been out there for 10 years, about, right at 10 years. They sun fade, they, you know, they get deteriorated and old and they do crack. These are for both. This is 3,500 containers. We have about 1,600 backlog right now, requests for new containers that people that haven't recycled before. So it's going to be both. We want enough we can replace those when they're getting, because we do see them getting damaged. It's just, it's inevitable with those, those arms are, you know, they're aggressive, but and there's some adjustments we've made to those over the, you know, the past few months as we go through the learning curve, but this is a both.
So are they damaging the old brittle containers or are they damaging the brand-new ones?
No, ma'am, it's the old ones. It's the old containers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Cridle, while you're there, let me ask you a question. We talked about the feasibility, you know, that arm can be modified so that it will take a little bit smaller, not the little bins. But you know, we've had some elderly people that, you know, they can get it out there, okay, but if they have a long driveway, it's a chore at the 65 gallon. Do we, do we have any possibility of maybe getting an interim size or an intermediate size?
Yes, sir. This supplier we're getting these from is also able to produce 35 gallon carts as well. They're smaller, you imagine about half the size, and they will be able to be picked up by the automated arm. It's just a much, much longer lead time. We're running into lead times. These are, this vendor we're getting these from, it's a, it's a five-week lead time from the time we give them the PO. Most of them are now 12-week lead times. We kind of pre, we got in line for these earlier, working with a new vendor. They were very aggressive and very hungry, which was a good thing with some of the, hey, it's a good thing sometimes you find somebody really wants your business, that's a good thing. But, and they're new to Columbus anyway, the vendor, they're not new to the business at all, but a lot of the established companies are 12 to 15 weeks out on the lead time. It's ridiculous.
I'll tell you, just hopefully make you feel a little better. At George Municipal Association Conference, I talked to some of the larger cities' mayors about their waste pickup. Most of them have contractors. Their contractors can't hire people and they are falling behind on pickups using their contractor. So I just say that to say that this is, this is not an isolated incident in Columbus. Councilor Thomas?
Mr. Cridle, I would request that you talk with the drivers of the garbage trucks. I have noticed that often the recycle bin is out, it has been empty and it's out so far in the street that it causes a transportation problem. If a car's coming this way and I'm going this way, I have to wait. And the other thing is, when the guys on the back of the truck empty the garbage first and the recycling is still there, they don't always put those garbage cans back so the recycle truck can get to them. And just request that you remind them that we need to make this as easy as possible on our census.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do both of those.
All right, Councilor Crabbe?
I just wanted to move to approve item C.
Okay. Motion to approve item C and the purchases from Councilor Crabbe, second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. City Manager, I don't think we went over them. If you would, go.
The fuel pumps, of course, and then computer equipment and accessories, annual contract, and of course, the 65 gallon cans. And then D, the mayor was, well, we had an emergency purchase of weapons for the sheriff. And then D was not going to be, actually asked for approval, but I think you did do all of the purchases. It's an emergency bulk waste pickup and delivery service that I want to speak to you briefly about. And, you know, we heard over and over again in Savannah that, of course, these are, this is an unprecedented time, a difficult time for all of us, whether it be private sector, nonprofit or local government. You know, when you're traveling between here and Savannah, you just can't stop anywhere to take a restroom break because they won't let you in the building, you know? And I took a picture of a sign at a Popeyes that says, you know, because of the shortage of employees, we're not open for, to allow entry and your wait in the drive-through will be delayed because of shortage of employees. You just, in Savannah, they had places that just were not open to greet you because of shortage of employees. And every time I see the sign, I take a photo of it. And I typically email it to the mayor so he can see it. But, you know, in the sessions, as the mayor talked about, they're all short of employees, whether they be bus drivers. I saw a news story I sent to the mayor, the AJC says that companies are now looking abroad for drivers, with CDLs, abroad, because they just can't find them. You know, I saw where Spirit Airline canceling flights and, you know, they don't have pilots and American Airlines, the same thing. It's all in the news. And the bottom line is that, as we heard the word, there is no playbook for the time that we're in with this pandemic. There is no playbook. And so that brings me to what Deputy City Manager Goodwin is about to share with you that as an emergency bulk waste pickup and delivery service. You know, I got the emails from, you know, around the table. And I said, you know, we just, there is no playbook. We just got to do something different. And so I had the deputy city managers in a Zoom call and the finance director and the public works director, and I said, "We just need to, we need to reach out to small business." And she's going to explain it, I don't want to stir the thunder, but because there's no playbook, we're just going to try something different within a short window. And then I may chime in as she goes through this, but to say why I think this will work. But I'm going to defer now to you, Deputy City Manager Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. As he indicated, this is just another aggressive step toward cleaning up our community with all the waste that we have out there. And the emergency services, bulk waste services that we are speaking of would be emergency curbside pickup of bulk waste. And then those organizations, those small businesses with vehicles would then deliver that waste to the landfill. The bulk items will consist of the large household appliances, what you see out there, the couches and the mattresses and refrigerators and those kinds of things. And of course, even large piles of branches, they're able to get that with the proper type of equipment that we will talk about shortly. The vendors or the individuals will be paid by the ton that they deliver, $250 per ton as they deliver it to the landfill. That means as they go through the landfill, get on the scales, they will weigh the truck. They will then go and dump or deposit the materials and then as they come back out, they will weigh again. And that will tell the scale operators just how much was deposited. They will keep up with that. They will also give them a ticket that will show, and they have something tangible to be able to say just what has been delivered, what has been dropped off. And so again, that's $250 per ton to those individuals who are going to be delivering and will qualify for this. The timeframe, we're trying to do this quickly. And so it's a very short timeframe, about 45 days, starting August the 15th and end September the 30th. We don't want to prolong this, but we feel that if we get enough people to take part in this, we can make a big dent in supplanting even what's already out there with Amways and with our services. The criteria to qualify for this would be a current business license, they have to already be in business, liability insurance would be required, e-verify if they're going to be employees, a W-9 form they will have to complete. Again, I'll talk about the certain type of equipment. There will also be a hold harmless agreement that they have to enter into with us. And again, the service agreement is 45 days. The equipment that they will need for bulky waste pickup, the furniture, the mattresses and that type of material, would be an enclosed truck or trailer to haul the material, similar to what you would go and go to the U-Haul and get one of these trucks if you're moving a, you know, a house or an apartment or whatever. But that type of truck possibly is what they would need. Don't have to do that. They, of course, can go to the U-Haul places, they don't have that type of vehicle and they can rent it for $19 a day and still take part in the program. If the trailer is used, it must be a high side with the appropriate cover and to be able to secure their load. The one thing that we don't want is for them to pile things on and then have no way of the debris just flying off as they're traversing the roadway. Labor necessary to load and unload, and then of course, the truck driver is what they will need. That's the, that's the equipment. Now, the other equipment that's needed for the limbs and for the brush, that kind of thing. And of course, you know, they could go and rent if they want something like what we have, a grab-all, call a grapple truck. They can do that and various type trucks are here in the presentation, even a dump truck they can get. But again, they have to have the appropriate bucket-type truck with the flat bottom for loading waste in the residential areas, a dump truck to haul the materials, rakes to clean up after piling the load on. So when, once you pick up, at least clean up around the area so it's not, because that stuff is going to continue to blow if you don't do that. Labor necessary to load and unload, and then of course, the truck driver.
And so with that, just quickly, Mayor, because I know that some people got another appointment, but the idea is that there may be three or five or eight local businesses, small businesses with these, with the type of truck that we're talking about or equipment that we're talking about. They've got to go through the process to register with us. There's a 45-day window. There's only so much bulk waste out there. And so the person who registers with us, who gets to the most bulk waste fastest, will get there and go back and load again, because time is money, because if they don't get it, the next person who's registered is going to get it. And they're going to get the tonnage and they're going to make the money. And there's only 45 days to make this money. And so, you know, we, I think they're going to be working like ants out there, you know, going along roadways, trying to get the most tonnage that I can get to the landfill and get the stuff off my truck and get back and get me another load before the next vendor, the other three or five beat me to it. Because when my 45 days, or let's say it's cleaned up in 20 days or 30 days, then it's over for them. And so that's what, there's no playbook. We're just trying to figure out how to clean up the streets and get, and give you some relief from the calls you're getting. And that's what this is about.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, to borrow a phrase from our police chief, it's all hands on deck. I mean, it's whatever we have to do, we will do and attempt to do to try to make sure that the services are delivered. There are cities all around the state and the country that are struggling to try to deliver services, most of them strictly because of the employee shortage. Thank you, ma'am. All right, and what we're going to do, and I want to tell the folks that are, I know we got a lot of folks here for the updates and we're anxious to hear those and I appreciate your patience, but we do have a couple, a couple of councilors out of town and we've got a couple that. got a couple that have to leave here by noon, so we're going to go to the clerk's agenda, and that way we can get all the voting handled so that we've got a quorum. And then we'll go back to the updates just as soon as we get through the clerk's agenda. Counselor Crabbe, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering if we're waiving the tipping fees for these, for this project? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the clerk's agenda, item one is a certificate of need application that was submitted by the Columbus Ambulatory Healthcare Services for the replacement of a CT scanner. I do see Counselor Huff that is standing right there, and we'll
We can, we need to receive that.
Show him as, thank you.
All right.
Items, item number two is a resolution counseling that's September 7th and the October 5th.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem.
Proclamation sessions.
Second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, there's a motion for the Mayor Pro Tem to approve resolutions excluding Counselor Tucker and Counselor Woodson, and seconded by Counselor House. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, there's a motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House to receive the minutes. Anyone, anybody want any of them pulled for discussion? Appears not. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I do have an add-on resolution to excuse Counselor Davis from today's meeting.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House to excuse Counselor Davis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, we have mayor's appointments. We have the convention, the Columbus Iron Works Convention and Trade Center Authority as Carson Cummings is eligible to serve another term of office.
We'll renominate him.
He may be confirmed.
Motion confirmed from Mayor Pro Tem, second Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have the Youth Advisory Council. The mayor's nominee is Victoria Watson. She may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm by Mayor Pro Tem, second Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council district seat appointments. We have the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Counselor Crabbe is nominating Mr. Lee Jordan to succeed Warren Wagner, and he may be confirmed.
Move confirmation from Mayor Pro Tem. I think I heard a second from Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They are confirmed.
Next, we have the Youth Advisory Council. We have listed districts one through eight as well as District 10. We have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. The Animal Control Advisory Board, the seat of Dr. Renee Lafranc. This is the Venneri Association recommendation. This seat has been vacant since 2019. We are having some difficulties in reaching the Venneri Association, so we will continue to work on that one. Jane Dunn is interested in serving another term if a member of council wanted to reappoint her. I'm sorry, I heard Mayor Pro Tem first as far as the renomination. We also have Lindsey Ellis. She's eligible to serve another term of office. We have not reached her to determine if she's interested, but if a member of council wanted to make that renomination, we'll check with her within the next couple of weeks. Counselor Huff has made that renomination. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, we have two seats that are open for nominations. The Department of Family and Children's Services is recommending Darlene Small to fill one of the seats if a member of council wanted. Thank you. Counselor Huff has made that nomination. We'll bring this back for the next meeting. The Board of Honor, we have Beth Harris. She's eligible to serve another term of office. We'll bring this back for the next meeting. For the Commission on International Relations and Culinary Liaison Encounters, we have the seat of Sarah Ann Arcilia. This seat is open for nomination. For the Uptown Facade Board, we have the seats of James J. Lewis, Alan Udi, Hannah Israel, Debbie Young, and Judd Richardson. All are eligible to serve another term of office, and we will just confirm with the appropriate association to determine if they are recommending their reappointment. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Because we've gone a little bit out of order, I'm going to call up Ms. El Amin, because we do allow any individual that did not complete their discussion in their five minutes to have three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. Ms. El Amin will give you three minutes, and it'll need to be regarding the same topic, a continuation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I do apologize for getting upset with you.
No, ma'am, I understand.
One of the things you said to me a while back is that you didn't understand community organizing. Well, me coming before the council with the public watching is community organizing. And I do want to say that during my healthcare crisis, the attorney letter, I did call him and explain my First Amendment rights, and no action has been taken against me. But I will say, at the time of the hospital, a wonderful officer, new to the police force, named Baxter, he came there when the security was hassling me. He was a medic in the Army, and he remembered his medical training. He saw my legs. He called for the hospital supervisor, and they admitted me to the hospital that night. And Officer Baxter, young police officer, stood with me in the emergency room, and I do want to commend him for that. He's new to the force. In addition, I reached out to the sheriff and Sergeant S. Murphy and Sergeant Weisel, two women. Sergeant Weisel visited my home. It was, I cried. It was so touching. And I do want to say to Counselor Walker Garrett, I really appreciate how much he's engaged with the group on Facebook, Columbus Organizing Together, because this meeting is being livestreamed to that group, so everybody has seen everything. It's 373 people in that group, and they're really from all over the world, some people from Ghana, China, but many of my comrades and friends, Mr. House, from around the country, from many major cities, because Columbus is unique. Nobody understands how you've used prison labor and other such things that affect the public health. And I do want to say, Mr. Mayor, that you promised me you would attend the Parents Summit, and you would speak at the Parents Summit. You remember? The Parents Summit, it's November 10th. It's going to be at Doubletree Hotel, and all of you are invited, and the whole community is invited. I know it's hard to get people to come, but parents from all the public housing communities will be sheltered so they can speak out to the school district and to all of you about their struggles as parents.
I will be there.
I will count on you, Mr. Mayor. You know I love you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know I love you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
All right, Mr., wait a minute, we've got Counselor Thomas.
I don't know if the city manager is one of those that has to leave, but, Mr. City Manager, this door to the hallway here, it needs to be unlocked during our meetings. I believe if the fire marshal were to come in here and see this door propped open with a chair, we'd get a citation of some kind, or at least a notice that that's a fire hazard to have that, that chair sitting in that doorway. And one of the other reasons that I would like to have that door closed during council meetings is that people tend to stand out in that hallway and talk, and I cannot always hear what's going on because of the conversation in the hall. So if you would just remind those folks who typically sit in the lounge, excuse me, the lounge meeting room, and if you would do something to, so that people can get in and out of this door without the chair being propped open.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, next on the updates, I've got Feeding the Valley, Rob Scott, Community Reinvestment Director.
Frank, thank you for your patience. Sorry for the wait.
Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Good, good afternoon. With me today, I have Feeding the Valley, and I have Mr. Frank Shepherd from Feeding the Valley, and I have Mr. Scott De Clu and Mr. Jim Limmiston from River Valley Regional Commission. We want to talk to you today about an exciting opportunity that is in front of Feeding the Valley. So, Mr. Shepherd?
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, and Council, City Council members for having us today to discuss a great opportunity that is presented to Feeding the Valley Food Bank and actually the food banks across the state through the Department of Community Affairs, and requires a little assistance from the city. So I have a quick slide deck, just want to, to talk a little bit about this. Scott will come in behind me and kind of fill in some of the details on the, the grant funding process. So a little bit about our food bank. As many of you know, we cover, it's going to be 18 counties altogether. We go as far north as Troup County, and in that, that graphic on the right, you see a star up there. We have the facility there. Our headquarters is here in Midland. We built that facility four years ago, and two years ago took over the, the Doertie Albany County, I was going to say Doertie County Albany area, the counties of Lee, Doertie, Terrelo, and Calhoun, and we have been operating out of a small facility there during those two years. The graphic on the left really talks about why we're here. Population of over a half a million, 115,000 food insecure people. By food insecure, we mean individuals who have trouble acquiring enough food to eat a consistent nutritious diet, that constantly make decisions between food and other basic needs. So, and in that number, we're currently being able to meet the needs of about 83,000 of them, so you have quite a gap there to begin with. Before, you consider the effects of COVID-19, and COVID-19 says those numbers are about 40% above where they were prior to that time. So we have a lot of work to do and feel that the need is for increased capacity to be able to, to help more people, to serve more meals, to get more food out in the community. Our first step in that expansion process was this facility in Albany. We bought a new facility, 35,000 square feet, that will be a huge addition to help individuals in a community that has been extremely hard-hit for some time through COVID-19, through Hurricane Michael, the list goes on. So that's our first step in the process, is we have acquired that particular facility to help in our southern counties. We've also invested in a number of other pieces of technology to also help the process to help distribute more meals. On the top of that graphic, you see a sealer and a chiller machines that allow us to make more of those meals. They're in the center photo, right in the, right in the center of the, that graphic. Sealed meals that allow us to distribute a lot more hot meals to individuals in need, also to be able to freeze those meals and therefore stockpile them and send them out into the small communities throughout the service area we have. We've acquired a couple of trucks lately as well, 153-foot refrigerated truck, which is extremely helpful in, in our logistical needs. The generator on the left ensures that our Columbus facility will never lose power, that should there be any sort of power disruption, that we're able to continue to operate and get food out in the community in the time of crisis. So COVID has changed our work in many ways, but the biggest issues there are that the need for assistance has dramatically increased. It's been as high as 53% of our, over our regular level. We're not able to meet the demands without, you know, continued expansion, and that was the reason for investing in technology, investing for a larger facility down in our Albany area. And so we're there, we're here, we're here then, you know, seeking the opportunity for the fans to expand, for funds to expand our, our current facility, to be able to help not only during the pandemic, but post-pandemic as well. We know the effects will continue to go on for a long time for individuals suffering food insecurity. They have rent evictions to be concerned about. There are a number of other issues. The financial effects are going to be there for quite some time, and so we'll need to be able to continue to help with, with food assistance. So this is a diagram of a facility expansion for us. Basically, the left half of the, of the diagram is the current facility, and then on the right is the, the, the new facility expansion laid out. It's basically going to add 24,000 square feet with 30-foot ceilings. It will double our dry storage, and it will also increase our cold storage by 50%. We'll be moving the volunteer center from in the center of the current facility out into the new expansion, and great logistics, that we volunteer center dedicated to, to that purpose. So the individuals coming to volunteer will be able to stay out of the traffic of truck traffic, out of forklift traffic throughout the facility, everything of that sort. So again, gives us a huge opportunity in, in capacity expansion to, to help not only in the months to come, but in the years to come as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott De Clu. He's going to go through some of the details of how that grant process works.
Thanks, Mr. Shepherd. Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm Scott De Clu. I'm a regional planner with the River Valley Regional Commission, and I just want to talk a little bit more about this grant opportunity, some of the partnerships that might be involved in the process. So let me preface by saying that what Feeding the Valley is talking about here is collaboration between River Valley Regional Commission, Feeding the Valley, and the City of Columbus with the Columbus Development Authority to enter an agreement to apply for this, this grant. RVRC regularly writes these grants for local governments in the region, and we always have staff on hand who are writing these community block grants. So this is a pandemic block grant. It's a program through the 2020 CARES Act. Funds come to local governments through HUD and then through DCA. And this particular COVID grant is an invitation, specifies invitation for entitlement communities to, we can go back, that's fine, thank you. This particular COVID CARES, CARES Act block grant has an invitation for entitlement communities to invite food banks to participate with this program. So local governments can apply for this particular block grant to help food banks or food pantries in their communities. So we know that this, this particular project that we're talking about falls under eligible activities. So there are four main partnerships that would be involved in this particular block grant. RVRC would write, submit, and administer this grant, funding for which comes from the grant itself, and Feeding the Valley would, of course, be the recipient for this grant. CCG would be the applicant, and the Development Authority's involvement is, is needed due to a programmatic clause, which I'll get to in just a moment. So this slide outlines the basic timeline for the grant and just the process for pre-award and post-award. What's important to note here is that the deadline is November 19th, and item number one, which is architectural procurement, which requires a 30-day mandatory request for qualifications period. So the first step in this grant application is to go ahead and start the procurement process, to get an add-out through our legal organs in the right locations, and to go through this process that DCA requires to, to procure the architect that would be working on, on the project. Then the process goes forward as usual. We document our need. We create a preliminary architectural report. We complete the, the environmental review and, and the budget and go through compliance, make sure that the Make sure that the, the city is in compliance with all the state and federal statutes. Sign council resolutions and agreements, and then we, we submit. And of course, RVRC would administer the grant after it was complete. This particular program does require a 25% match. We've got a rough estimated budget of a $4.9 million project, and Feeding the Valley has set aside the 25% match that goes to this. If awarded, DCA drawdowns for funding could be timed to coincide with payments to Feeding the Valley. So there wouldn't necessarily be a reimbursement program. It, it's very rare that governments will, will pay in advance if, if the award were to be funded. So what's the involvement with the Development Authority? Funds can only be awarded toward a project if the applicant owns that particular property. So the way that this would work is the Development Authority could act as a title holder for a five-year period of, of the facility. And then once that five-year period is up, everything would return to normal. But that would allow the City of Columbus to apply for the funds and then give those funds to Feeding the Valley to complete the project. So really, we, we're just here to talk about what this grant opportunity looks like, the partnerships that are involved, and to answer any questions that, that you all may have about this particular project. So, thank you.
Well, I tell you, I think we saw, I mean, as in so many areas of our community, we saw this past year just how, I mean, close to the line y'all operate because your capacity, we thought, was awesome. And then all of a sudden, we had that huge increased demand. And I, I mean, I just, I still think you guys are some of the biggest heroes of this community because of partnering with other organizations to try to help continue to distribute, distribute food and keep people from really, it kept one more worry off of their, off of their backs. And so I think this makes good sense to try to explore this and look for ways to try to add capacity. Because although we continue to struggle to try to minimize, minimize food insecurity and poverty, and that's a slow turn, until we do, we've got to have the resources to be able to keep our folks safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? I don't see any. Y'all did a thorough job. Thank y'all. Thank you very much, Frank.
Mr. Mayor, so what I'm going to do, Mayor, I'm going to delay the code enforcement update. We'll do the stormwater update, the corridor study update, and then we will delay the American Rescue Plan update and just briefly mention the Animal Care and Control Service timeline and status. So next, I will call up the stormwater update and followed by the corridor study update.
Okay. And I'm, I'm going to state, I'm, I'm going to have to leave a little bit early, and I apologize, but the governor's in town and I'm a little bit late. I told him I'd greet him. So I'm going to head out there in just a few minutes, and I'm going to ask our budget chair if she would to come over and continue to facilitate the meeting.
Sure.
For these last few. Good to see y'all. Back home from Savannah.
Thank you. Yes, we have a brief update this morning on some of our stormwater projects. I will mention that some of these are included or potentially included in our SLOSS list for future considerations by the citizen. We have Barge, who is our OnCall Engineering Services for Stormwater, David Bishop, and Scott Thompson. And I'll let them bring the update.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. So just before we jump into it, I would, I did want to say congratulations to the City Manager. I was actually in Savannah. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Being inducted into the Hall of Fame there, so.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. So today, we're going to go over a couple of updates on some projects that are ongoing to where you know where the status of those are. And then we're going to also address the original question, I believe, from Councilor Glenn Davis regarding the siltation issue. So we'll get into that. So I'm going to turn it over to Scott Thompson.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. So we came before you last year on behalf of the Engineering Department and discussed some stormwater projects. And today, we are here to update on three of those. So if you recall, this is an issue that is along the Riverwalk, directly below the Senovus Building at Bay Avenue. There are gabion baskets installed that have been failing over the years with the flooding of the river. These, these are photos from, from the past that we showed previously. One thing to note is there is a sewer line that runs, 60-inch sewer line that runs along this slope that carries combined sewer from the city down to the treatment plant. And if this slope were to fail, that would be compromised as well as the Riverwalk. So this is the rendering of what has been designed. And just so you know, the design is complete, and the city is gathering bids from contractors currently to install this. Got a couple of different views. The umbrellas, you can note that those will be provided by others, but they're there just for as a concept. There will be benches that can be installed. The grassing area is an artificial turf, so maintenance will be minimal. And then there will be a Columbus, Georgia signage along the back retaining wall. And just, just for reference, the, the back wall is about eight foot tall, and the two lower walls are five foot tall. So that it's set up to where there'd be seating on benches in front, in the grassed areas in the sidewalk behind that. And then there's an amphitheater seating there in the, the center section. Okay. Also wanted to give an update on the Warm Springs Road closure. Culvert has failed there, and we have been working diligently to design a solution and repair for that. There have been some issues come up recently that I will discuss. Wanted to show you, this, this is an existing view of what it looks like below the road. This is the crossing, that concrete slab that you see at the top of the screen is the actual roadway. There's a concrete slab and the asphalt is on top of that. But you can see on the, the left-hand picture, the footing for that wall supporting the road is completely undermined. And then there's substantial fractures in the wall supporting the roadway. You can see that there. And then the, the right-hand picture is a fracture actually in that top slab for the roadway. It's very, very much failed and does not need to be used, thus the reason the, the road has been closed. We performed a geotechnical investigation on this. That's kind of the first step to design replacement. And it was found that the soils are poor in this area. So we had to start to design a deep foundation system for both the headwalls associated with this culvert crossing and, and also the culvert itself. Those pictures that we just saw were from probably three months ago, and these are from last week. You can see it's continuing to fail. The roadway now is pulling dirt from the road surface down into the creek, and it's continuously getting worse. So currently, we are in design. We're hoping to have a contractor out there in the next few weeks to begin demolition, and at that point, it will be structured as a design build setup to where we will be finalizing the design as the contractor is making progress. And also, one thing to note, there are several utilities, particularly a gas, two gas mains related to this crossing that we have been coordinating with Liberty Utilities on relocating that to accommodate the new crossing.
One thing I want to note back to the, the photo here. So we made the decision, you know, a few, several months ago to close the road due to a safety concern. The one thing that we have noticed and has been reoccurring is that we, we have noticed there's been citizens that have actually been removing the barricades out of the way and driving across this. Obviously, I, I understand there's definitely an inconvenience in that area. There's no doubt about that. But reemphasizing the safety aspects of this, and, you know, I, I know we had a meeting last week with, with Ms. Pan and Ms. Donna that we were talking about getting some other items out there to actually where it'll prevent them able to be able to remove that. So something that's more, you know, heavier that can't be just easily moved out of the way. Because I'm not, the problem I, we have with it is when one person moves it, if they don't put it back, the person behind them doesn't know that somebody has moved it and they've taken on that, you know, that risk. So that ha, that has, action is being taken. But the plan is hopefully in the next two or three weeks, we're going to have a contractor start demoing this out of the way, and we get, we're going to kind of treat it as a, you know, a design build to make it a, a quicker process. So that is in the process. So, and I believe Liberty is in the process. They've got two high-pressure mains in that area that are actually attached to the side of the bridge. They are actually, we're out there yesterday and today to start isolating those sections to where they will be out of the way for our contractor to start demoing the culvert. So just wanted to point that out to everyone. All right. So this was.
Before you go any further. Would you go back to the?
Riverwalk?
Riverwalk.
Yes, ma'am.
If you build those, put those into action, you know, we have four or five floods. A year. Is that, will that maintain our Riverwalk?
Yes, all right. So, so I'll kind of go back to when we first kind of got into this and started realizing this. It was obviously not going to be a long-lasting solution, and, and obviously, we know what the risk is. Two things, a couple of things. It was the sewer line, and it was ultimately Bay Avenue, which is on top of that hill, you know, that we were worried about compromised. So we look at this as two things. One, a permanent solution that can deal with the fluctuation of the river levels. Because the biggest thing is not so much the flood that comes up, it's the saturation of the soil. And when the river level drops, it pulls the soil, which is what you see in these photos. That's why the soil's being pulled into the river and thus having a failed slope. So the design is taken into account, the fluctuation, the velocity of the river, all those, and the drainage behind all these walls needed to get it out from behind the slope where we don't have that saturation and the soil loss. So that's the first address. The second thing, we said, hey, this is an opportunity for us here in Columbus that, as many of y'all know, when you see that view on every marketing magazine in Columbus, a lot of times, you see that, everybody says, oh, you see the Senovus Building. Well, this will be an opportunity when they take that photo now. We've got a wall that has a Columbus, Georgia on there, kind of be a key mark, marketing piece for Columbus. So it's just, it was accomplished both to have priority number one, protect the slope, protect the sewer line, and prevent it from deteriorating and, you know, failing in the future. So that was our priorities.
Great. Thank you so much. Let me see if I can get down to this.
Was there any other questions regarding the first two projects?
Yeah, no. Okay, Sean.
Thank you. I have a question about, is there access, I mean, mine is, is back on the Riverwalk, too. Is there access from that area up to Bay Avenue? Because isn't just above Columbus, Georgia, isn't that about where the zip line is?
No, ma'am. We're, we're upstream from the zip line. The zip line is actually between here and the playground area. So it's between, I guess, it'd be, what, 12th? Yeah, it'd be 12th.
Okay, so where are the stairs that come down in between?
So the, the water tower stairs that's along the Eagle Phoenix is just to the left of this photo.
Okay.
And then the stairs coming off of, trying to make sure I get my road right, 11th is just to the right of this photo.
Okay, so it's between 11th and the, and the tower.
So if you went into this photo further down the Riverwalk to the right, right here, you would run into the stairs that go up to 11th.
Okay.
So which would be prior to the ziplining.
Okay, so you would get to the, to Bay from those stairs or the other stairs? So there's no access above?
Correct.
I was thinking that this would be a nice place for people to hang out while they're waiting to zipline, which I guess could still possibly.
You'd still have access if they wanted to hang out here, and then they could also, always go down, and they have the, you know, the back-and-forth ramp that would lead straight to the, the zip line course. So that is an option as well.
Okay, thanks. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Any further questions before I go to the third topic we're?
I don't see.
Okay. So this last topic here is to, to answer the question from, I believe, it was Councilor Davis that originally proposed it regarding the siltation into Lake Oliver. And it was, I think, a two-phase question. It was the siltation was one, was one question. The second was the regardings of potential flooding upstream of there at the Brookstone property. So just wanted to make sure everybody's clear, the area that's highlighted here is what is the area. So this is a Long River Road. Your, your marina is just south of this yellow highlighted area here. So, so we went out and just, we did a lot of investigation, but I wanted to show some timeline photos from Google Earth, basically to let, let everybody know, this is not something that has happened in the last six months, not in the last year, not in the last five years. This has been an ongoing problem, as you'll see here, all the way back to in the mid-late 90s. Okay? So this is aerial photo in 2021. So you can obviously see there's a lot of silt that gets dropped out here. And what, what it is, is you have the, the creek that comes in here, it's hitting, it's velocity, high velocity because it's in constrained area. And then when it hits this big body of water, it obviously is able to slow down, and then the silt drops out. And this is what, where it's getting accumulated. This is a photo. It's hard to, to kind of give you a picture. This photo is a photo sitting out there. If you look on the left photo, you can see there's geese, and those geese aren't floating. They're standing on top of, you know, silt. And, you know, obviously, there's trees and stuff that are, that's not floating. They're sitting on top of silt, and it's trapped there. So these are, that's, that is where that area is. And then, but if you look at it coming into the lake, as you can see in that photo, that's slab rock. That's basically the bottom of the creek. So when we look at, is it a siltation issue from the creek itself? The creek is fairly clean. I mean, you can see all the natural bottom rock in the creek itself, which leads me to us to understand that there is a velocity. It's, it's blowing it through the creek. It's just when it hits that body of water that is still, because they may not be generating at the time, that allows time for that sediment to drop out. So here's a photo when they, you know, they drop the lake every two years to do dock maintenance on, on Lake Oliver. So this was obviously a time photo in 2012 when they had the lake dropped, and they drop it two feet, is what they do. So you can see how much silt was in the lake at that point in time. So it is significant amount of silt. There's no doubt there. This is a photo back from 1999. As you can see, it's not as far out to the left, but it is at the, right at the entry of where that creek dumps out. And to kind of just give you an idea, this is all over the place. This is development that, where it stood in 93 and where it stands today in 2021. We've had development, which means you've had increased runoff. You've had pipes that may have, you know, from, on private property that may be, you know, there's a host of things that could have caused this. So what I wanted to point out, this is to answer his ultimate question. There's nothing that we see as a smoking gun as per se as this is the problem. that we see as a smoking gun as per se as this is the problem. This is a cumulative problem that's happened over 20 something years. So just wanted to point that out. Now, to answer the second question was the potential flooding concerns upstream due to this silt. We basically went and pulled a FEMA flood map. So if you see, that's River Road that you see going up and down on the page. The red and blue striped hatching is a floodway, a regulated floodway, meaning you can't build anything in it, it's going to be, it's a life safety issue if you were to have anything constructed in that. And then the blue is the hundred-year flood elevation. So as you can see, their football field, the track, their baseball fields, their softball field, all of those are within the hundred-year flood of elevation. So if you have a hundred-year flood, all of those are going underwater, no matter what. I mean, that's just, that's documented through FEMA. So, and then just to kind of give big picture of where all this water's coming from, you can see it follows all the way up and comes all the way up through behind Bradley Park Drive Development and keeps, and keeps going. So this is a very large drainage basin and that's the last, you're at the bottom of the basin basically in this view before it hits the lake. And the lake has a guaranteed elevation that Georgia Power keeps. They don't allow it to go any higher because that, they certify all the flood insurance for all the property owners around Lake Oliver. So they're going to keep their lake at that level, so that doesn't change. This flood elevation, so that, that's the reason it floods so much in that one area. So to answer the question, from our professional opinion, the silt is a ongoing problem, has been. The flooding, it's going to flood based on this, it's almost guaranteed it will. The only thing I could provide to that entity, if they wanted to look at things to improve some things, they could look along their areas to make sure they don't have any obstructions in the creeks that may be causing that. But from our viewpoint, the flooding concern is a, it is a FEMA regulated floodway and the siltation is a long going, so just wanted to report that.
Yeah, and, and I think that answers the question and, uh, I will ask, uh, Councilor Davis to, we'll, we'll send him this presentation-
Okay.
-that he can kind of replay it without having to go through the council meeting.
And if he has a question-
Sure.
Feel free to-
Sure.
-reach out to us on that. Okay?
Great.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, okay. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, um, the next one you said was going to be?
Code enforcement, not, excuse me, I'm sorry, stormwater update and, uh, the stormwater update. And then the final one will be just a brief, uh, timeline regarding this animal care and control.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Corps of Storm, yeah, I'm sorry, we just had the stormwater update, Corps of Study and- We're going to have it, it's brief. And then we will just mention about the animal care. Okay, Donna Newman.
Thank you. Uh, we have with us this morning, uh, Mitchell Greenway, he is with Stand Tech, he's another one of our own call transportation engineering firms. We had received numerous complaints, as was mentioned earlier in council, specifically in regards to speeding, uh, but there were also other safety concerns, um, specifically on 13th Street with all the new development, redevelopment going on and pedestrian safety, people trying to cross from uptown over to the new businesses on 13th. So, um, we'll let him come up and kind of update us. This is early in the process, but we want to get you started because we will be engaging with citizens groups and residents in these areas and so you might start getting some calls.
Thank you and thank you all for having me here today. I will keep this brief. Director Newman is giving you the background on this, so I'm, I'm going to skip through a couple of slides. This is really our kickoff, uh, to the public engagement part of the project. And what I want to do today is give an overview of the project really, really quick, discuss the objectives of the study and then go over the schedule, including where we're at and what we've done, uh, to date.
Okay, if you would ju- adjust your mic just a little bit.
I'll stand up closer. So this is an overview map, uh, of the three streets, 8th Street, 13th Street and then 17th Ave. Catch up. The study for 8th Street will, will be from Front Avenue, uh, to Veterans Parkway. The study for 13th will begin at the Chattahoochee River Bridge and run through Fifth Avenue. And then the study for 17th Avenue will start at 17th Street and run north up to Talboton Road. So we're aware, as Director Newman mentioned, um, of several pedestrian related incidents along the corridors and of reported speeding, uh, concerns on the corridors. Our primary objectives for these, for the study of these three corridors will be to improve safety, uh, and, and provide better mobility options, um, for all users. So to do this, we'll collect traffic counts and develop, uh, and develop traffic forecasts and then we'll perform a crash analysis, speed study, road safety audit and a capacity analysis. And then as part of our traffic, or part of our data collection process, we'll also have a virtual, uh, public, uh, information open house. And then once we have collected all the data, we'll prepare alternatives for each street, we'll analyze those alternatives, we will present those alternatives to the public during a second meeting. And then after we get the feedback from the public, we'll, we'll develop or, or come up with our preferred alternative for each street. This is the project schedule. We've completed some of the data collection. We have, we'll continue that data collection, uh, next week actually with a virtual public meeting that'll go live on Monday. And then the project will conclude next April with the preferred alternative for all three streets. So our next steps, immediate, uh, the, the public meeting, again, I mentioned, will, will open up next week. Uh, that goes live on the 16th and it will conclude on September 10th. The web address is columbuscorridors.com. And our goal here is to learn more about the project from the public and, and have them identify the problems, uh, that they perceive for each street. And the way we will gather this information from the website, um, there's a separate page, and this keeps advancing, there's a separate page on the website for each street. So 8th will have a page, 13th will have a page and 17th will have a page. And the public can go on and complete a survey for each street separately. And then there's an interactive map where they can identify on that map where there are particular, uh, specific problems. And then as soon as the comment period closes for the public meeting, um, we will, very soon after, we will have a road safety audit, uh, that will include a short list of individual stakeholders, um, representing various groups and organizations, um, throughout Columbus. And during the audit, we'll visit each corridor, identify the opportunities for improvement. And this is, it's a little bit different from, from a traditional traffic, uh, safety study and that this really, really engages the public. And instead of engineers telling you what the problems are and how to fix this, fix the safety issues, we really rely on the public's feedback to help us drive that conversation. So it's, it's, it's a really interactive approach. And if there are specific stakeholders that you would like to be represented at these meetings, please let Director Newman know and we'll coordinate with her and, and include them, uh, on those meetings. It's a time commitment. As you can see there, we've got September 21st and 22nd, um, right now kind of marking on the map for those meetings. So it'll be a pretty significant time commitment for the people involved, but that road safety audit is really where we get the good information to help us come up with good solutions.
Any questions? Councilor House?
Thank you. When you say time commitment, is that like an all-day event for, for the stakeholders?
Yes, sir, for, for 8th Street and 13th Street, since those, the study area is a little bit smaller, we think, we're thinking a half day for each. So we'll do both of those in one day.
Okay.
And then 17th Ave being a much longer corridor, that would probably take the majority of the day.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
And Madam Chair, the final update was an add-on. Actually, I, I received, um, a request from a city councilor to just, um, update on the RFP for animal care and control, uh, services. We've been talking about that for a while. We came recently and provided you a timeline and, um, uh, for, um, this, um, contract or RFP. And, um, I believe we are pretty much on schedule with the-
That, that is correct, yes, sir.
The timeline?
Mm-hmm, we are.
And, and I know that you're getting emails from people and, and, and I'll just say upfront before she makes, uh, covers this timeline, is that when we do, um, bids or RFPs, um, those who express an interest, they sign agreements. And those agreements, um, say that, um, they will not taint the process by contacting the city manager and the mayor and council members and, uh, if they've got questions, they're supposed to send those questions to, uh, the purchasing manager. And then the purchasing manager in fairness send them out to all, um, those who have expressed an interest so that they all get the same information. And so, um, any organization that expresses an interest should not be contacting me, should not be contacting the mayor, should not be contacting city council members and this, and what they signed says that will eliminate them. Period. And, um, I could pull up a copy of it to show you the details of, of what it says. And so we just want to be clear about that and, and so, um, the process is a process and, and, and you can't pressure staff, cannot pressure staff into doing what you want to do because you may or may not be the only party interested. And so procurement process, Mr. City Attorney, is a law and we have to follow the law. And, and I just got to express that before she even gets into this, uh, because I did see some of those emails. And that's just it. So with that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, this is in regard, of course, to the animal care and control, uh, RFP, which is the, the 21 dash 0034. This is the same presentation, I'm not going to go through this presentation, just go through the project timeline, uh, that we presented on June the 15th, giving you the update, um, with the indication that on April 30th, the one submission that we received, uh, was due on that date, April the 30th. And so the evaluation committee, uh, has been reviewing the submissions, um, since that time. And, uh, this is a very, um, complex, uh, RFP. And so we have really been taking our time going back and forth, providing questions and answers, responses to and pro, uh, with the, uh, with the vendor. Uh, and so that's where we are and of course with the timeline, uh, we do look to be able to bring a ordinance revision on, uh, August the 24th, uh, uh, somewhere there about, August the 24th, uh, September's, between that time and September the 7th, uh, that will actually talk just about, uh, the enforcement piece of that because of course, uh, police department has to be involved. So there's an ordinance revision that is needed. We look to finalize the approval, uh, from the committee, uh, you know, in early September, uh, and bring it forward for council's consideration and first reading, uh, in late September. So that's where we're looking at, second reading, uh, second Tuesday in October and perhaps starting the contract November the 1st and, uh, of course with a transition period of about eight weeks, uh, if, uh, to the successful, uh, vendor. Uh, and so that eight-week transition period could be through the end of the year, uh, once started November the 1st. So that's what we're looking at and that's really all the information that we can share at this time.
Well, and, and I, uh, actually pulled up a, one of the forms, communication concerning this solicitation, which is a form that typically would be signed by someone interested. It says, "This page must be signed and returned with the vendor's bid proposal. Failure to include this form will automatically render vendor's response non-responsive. All questions or clarifications concerning this solicitation shall be submitted in writing. The city will not orally or telephonically address any question or clarification regarding bid slash proposal specification. If a vendor visits or calls the purchasing division with such questions, he or she will be instructed to submit the questions in writing." And then it goes on and says, "All contact concerning this solicitation shall be made through the purchasing division. Bidders should not contact city employees, department heads, using agencies, evaluation committee members, including non-CCG employees, contracted personnel associated with this particular project, i.e. architects, engineer and consultants or elected officials with questions or any other concerns about the solicitation, questions, clarifications or concerns, um, shall be submitted to the purchasing division in writing. If it is necessary that a technical question needs addressing, the purchasing division will forward such to the using agency who will submit a written response." Purchasing division will forward, and it goes on, and it says, um, "Any requests concerned, protest after a solicitation has closed and pending award must also be submitted in writing to the purchasing division." And that person has to sign, it says, "I agree to forward all communication about this solicitation in writing to the purchasing division. I understand that communication with other persons, other than the purchasing division, will render my bid proposal response non-responsive and I will no longer be considered in the solicitation process." Everyone has to sign this. And when you sign that, we mean it. So I just want to say that we've got a timeline that we've shared publicly, there is a process and we're going through it and we are going to try to adhere to it. And so no pressure should be applied.
Councilor House?
I'm with you and that's why I haven't tried to bother anybody. Most of the people that are contacting me, whether it's a Facebook posting or a email message, are not part of the vendor.
Okay.
They're, they're just private citizens, they want to know what's going on. So what do you want me to tell them?
Well, I, I, I-
You tell them the timeline?
I would share with them the timeline and I would share with them that we are being deliberate about what we're, because see, here's what we cannot allow to happen, that we don't do the due diligence that we need to do. And then we make the award and then the successful awardee, so, so when we, and we want to contract this out, this is what we really want to do, bad. And so when we do, and all of the future calls that we normally get, dog being tethered, we're going to say, uh, we don't do that anymore.
Call somebody else, yeah.
And when we say we don't do it anymore, I think the next call is going to be to the city councilor. And if that organization is failing and you call me, I'm going to say, well, Madam Counselor, uh, we don't do that anymore. You all voted that we would contract this and that's where it's at. So if they don't have the financial stability, if they don't have the management team, if they don't have any of those things, they're not going to be calling me. So we got to get it right. And, and animal care is a big deal and we know that because we've gotten the calls, that's why we're eager to let, contract it out, so that we don't have to get the calls anymore. But the calls are going to go somewhere and I think they're going to be coming to you. And you want us to make sure it's right so that you don't get those calls, hopefully. That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilor Craft?
Thank you. Well, Mr. John Redman taught me a very, very valuable lesson, probably with the first month I was in office. And that is why I requested this. month I was in office, and that is why I requested this. And my response, I believe that who's contacting me are animal advocates. I don't think it's the vendor, I'm not sure who the vendor is, I have, you know.
Sure.
We don't, we're not there in that process. So, I, I believe they're animal advocates, and I have told, I have responded to every one of them, that there is a process that we must follow, and that council is not supposed to interrupt that process. And if we do in any way, we could delay the process further, because it will have to start all over from the very beginning, and so they need to be patient with the process.
And I think they want, for the same reason I just stated, they want us to get it right, because, you know, if they're animal advocates, that, they're still going to be calling someone, it just won't be the city. You know, it will be council members, because council members decided to contract it out. You're going to still get the calls, but you won't be, when you get the call, you're going to be calling the vendor and not me.
And so, you'll give us the vendor's phone number, right?
We'll give you the vendor's phone number, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Advocates wanted this.
Yeah. So, I just kind of want to be clear about how that process, once we get there, so, the, the delay is not because we're trying to figure out not, how, how to not do it, we're just trying to get it right, because we want to do it. So, I just wanted to be clear. Any other questions, Madam Chair, on that?
I don't see any.
Okay, well, that will conclude my agenda today.
Uh, is there any other business to come before the council? Pops.
Thank you. Um, we have some very good employees who work for our city government. And I think that, um, with everything considered, the pandemic and whatever, when city employees do go over and beyond, I think that we need to give them their flowers and let them know how much we do appreciate them.
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, you live near North Oakley Drive.
Yes.
So, you know on North Oakley Drive, all of the homes, the lawns are done, the houses look really good.
Yeah.
Everything's dress right dress.
Yes.
There is one house, for years, that has been the Addams Family House.
Yeah.
And I think it was a, a brilliant idea when we merged the property management and the special enforcement, having to work together. And I gave them a call about two weeks ago on a house that for years has been sitting there. It's unoccupied, the owners don't live here anymore, you know, they know how to play the game.
Right.
When the weeds get high, they know, city's going to send a letter. So, when the city sends a letter, they get a cut.
Mm-hmm.
Like that.
Right.
Meanwhile, the house is steadily deteriorating, in fact, so much now, on the times that I've gone there, I've seen in the evening, where the rats have, have, because there's a space between the roof and the wood, where they transition and they go through. I've been there a number of times.
Yeah.
So, this time when I called, um, two young people came out, and I was upset, uh, because I said, this is, the, I said, this is ridiculous. They amazed me by the way they handled, because the, the, the citizens that live there.
Mm-hmm.
Beautiful homes are upset. And those two individuals, one's name is Walter Lewis Jr., property manager.
Yes, know him.
And the other is a, a young man named Anthony Furlough.
Sure.
Anthony Furlough got there first, and I was talking to him about the grass. I said, now, what do you, he says, "Council Board, I've sent, the, the letter out, it's going to come." And I said to him, I said, "Fine, now, what about the house?" And this, as I said that, this other gentleman came up. Now, keep in mind the fact, it was not what they said, it's the manner in which they addressed the questions to the citizens that impressed me.
Sure.
And they let them know that, quite recently, where I, I deal with the property management, and I'm, I'm taking note of that, he's dealing with the weeds, and that's going to be done and cut.
Mm-hmm.
So, we want you to know, we're going to take care of this situation, it's going to happen. This is what I like to say, but it's going to take a process, and it's not going to happen overnight.
Yes.
And they answered the questions, keeping the citizens in mind, that it's going to take a process to do this, but we're on this here, and this is what we're going to do.
Sure.
Completely defuse the situation in a very intelligent, in a manner where they reiterated everything, we're going to do it, you might still see it, but know that we're doing something.
Sure.
That was impressive to me.
Okay.
And it was hot that day, extremely hot.
Yeah.
And we stood, they stood out there with me, and they took the time to answer the questions, which is all really that the citizens really asked. They know things take time, but they kind of like to hear it, like to kind of get some skin on it, or, or, or the process.
Right.
And they took the time to do that. Those two gentlemen, I would like for, and I, and I made a notation, because I knew that, the director, Ryan Pruitt, was going to be here.
Yeah.
The gentleman's names are, uh, Walter Lewis Jr., and the other one was Anthony Furlough. We give them a warm fuzzy for the job that they did.
We will.
The house is still there.
Sure.
But I'm not getting any more of their complaints, because their Pete's citizens are satisfied.
Good. And they're both great employees.
So, I wanted to give them, and pass it on to you, to let them know, I appreciate the job that they did.
We, we'll do, and it's, we're making notes back here, and Ryan Pruitt is in the back, and he can hear what.
Thank you so much, Mr. City.
Everything he said.
And thank you for that, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Lawrence. Anything else? If not, meeting is adjourned.